It is, uh, this is the Town of Citrus Select Board Meeting on January 19th. It is 6:31 PM. Do I have an acceptance of the agenda? Some move, some move by Ms. Curran, second and by?
Second.
Mr. Vignani, um, all votes tonight, because we are remote, must be taken by roll call, so we'll have this initial one taken.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
All right, thank you for accepting the agenda. Um, this meeting is being held in response to Governor Baker's Declaration of Emergency a very long time ago. All meetings for Tubler, uh, Town of Citrus will be held remotely until further notice. This meeting is being recorded and can be viewed, um, live on Citrus Community Television Facebook. If you want to participate, the, um, the link to the Zoom meeting is on the Town of Citrus website. Uh, agenda for the town select board meeting. Um, and with that, I would like to, uh, ask if there are any walk-ins that would like to address the board. Uh, to do that, you can go to your participant, participants button at the bottom of the screen and raise hand. Or, um, you can take your video, uh, put your video on and then physically wave and we'll try to acknowledge you. Are there any walk-ins this evening? I see none. So, uh, the next item on our agenda is to have a report of our town administrator, Mr. Bedrow.
Good evening, uh, second, uh, time in a row that I'm gonna start with good news. As of last Thursday, all the public safety employees in the Town of Citrus who wish to receive a COVID-19 vaccine were able to be vaccinated, get their first dose of the Moderna vaccine. Um, out of all police, fire dispatch, I believe only five or six actually opted out, so the vast majority of our employees to get the vaccine. In addition, our public health nurses and school nurses were also vaccinated as they were the ones who administered the vaccines to the public safety employees. Terrific news. I know the, the police and fire dispatches are, uh, very happy to have gotten this. I know it's a load off their mind, uh, that they will be able to get vaccinated and not have to worry about being exposed and take that, uh, take the virus home to their families, so that's very good news. Uh, it is, as I said, hopefully the light at the end of the tunnel, the beginning of the end of the pandemic. Uh, they will receive their second shots as Moderna is a two-shot vaccination. They will receive their second shot at the beginning of February, probably the second week in February is about 28 days. So that's the next step of the fact, vaccine phases. We're going into the end of phase one of the vaccines. Uh, we're in concrete care settings, home-based healthcare workers and healthcare workers in non-COVID-facing care. Uh, that will end phase one when those are done. Phase two, which is scheduled to start in February, which I, I can't believe is really only a week and a half away, two weeks away. Uh, we'll start with individuals with two or more comorbidities in people over the age of 75. And then they've recently added to that residents and staff of public and private low-income and affordable housing, or which we believe will include our housing authority. After that, phase two, step two, will be teachers, public, uh, employees in the DPW, water and sewer, restaurant workers, grocery workers, along those lines. And then adults over 65 and people with one comorbidity for COVID will round out phase two. And then phase three, which is scheduled to start in April, would be the general population. Uh, we have not been informed yet how they're gonna administer the vaccines in phase two, whether there'll be individual sites for towns to do vaccinations, whether there'll be mass vaccination sites such as Gillette, or whether they will go with the model they use for nursing homes. Whereas if a facility has a existing relationship with a vaccinating company like the CVS or some sort of nursing company, whether they will do it. As soon as we have that, we will pass it on. Uh, we do know that we are expecting that any sign up for the vaccine is going to be done through an online portal. It was done for our public safety employees. We expect that will continue, that there will be an online portal. As soon as we have any information, though, we will push it out to people so they will know when and where they need to go in order to get in line when it's their turn for the vaccine. Uh, in terms of case numbers, we had a good week, uh, relatively speaking. We had 97 cases in the past seven days, Monday to Monday. That was down from the 129 of the previous week when we added in Sunday's cases. So that is a good drop. Uh, Monday, the 28th was the last day that we had had a single-digit case count. Until yesterday, we had a five count, and I believe today was a five count, so we've had two good days in a row. Uh, positivity rating over the two weeks though was 9.66, which was up from the 7% of the previous week. Statewide yesterday was 5.91. So, right now, the indicators are all over the place. Some are up, some are down, some are holding steady. So we seem to be at that tipping point where if people continue to follow the guidance, avoid crowds, wear their masks, wash their hands, et cetera, et cetera, we would expect to see the numbers come down. Uh, if people do not, then we would expect those numbers to stay high and actually continue to grow. Uh, we have found out that the UK variant, so-called, of COVID-19 has been found in Massachusetts. Uh, the good news is the vaccine so far has been shown to be effective against that variant. The bad news is it is more contagious than the original COVID-19, uh, virus, so it's easier for people to get. So we will continue to monitor that. Uh, as of this week, town hall and the library will still be closed to the public. We are gonna extend that until February 1st as the numbers come down. We are available by appointment. Everybody is working in the building. If you need to get ahold of us, you can call us, email us, or write us, and we'll get back to you. If you need to get in to see us, we'll make an appointment, and you'll be able to come into the building following all COVID protocols, including contact tracing. Coal Parkway, you'll see if you get onto Coal Parkway, that the trains are there, so they're starting work on Coal Parkway. I hope to start seeing them actually do some pile driving in the very near future. Uh, that project will put that, uh, marina on pilings, and it's scheduled to be completed by the start of boating season. If you go down to Cedar Point, that's still going on. Uh, the holes are pretty deep, the trenches are pretty wide, so we ask people to avoid that area, if at all possible, walkers, bikers, uh, people just going out there to gawk and see the sights. It is pretty congested. Uh, it is not a real safe area to be traversing if you're just down there for pleasure, so uh, try to avoid that as much as possible, and that work is ongoing. Uh, the water line replacement, uh, that was talked about in the water update is out to bid. Those bids are due back in about two weeks. These are mostly the small two-inch lines, uh, that we have been unable to flush. Getting rid of those lines will be another significant step in improving our water quality. It also includes the replacement of hydrants and flushing gates in various parts of town, so we can flush parts of the system that we have not been able to flush in the past. So that is good news. Uh, more good news. At the town meeting in November, the town approved a new software system for building departments and to automate some of our processes. The first module of that is the new online fire burning permit module is up. It is live and it is online with a link on the front of the website. Uh, this will reduce the need for people to have to call the Public Safety Dispatch Center to get their burn permits. They can go online, apply for their burn permits, and pay for their burn permits, which is something they also have nothing else do in the past. So that will, once people start using that, that will really take some of the burden off the dispatch area to handle the emergency calls that they have to handle. We will now move on to moving the building department onto that module, but the thought was with burning season just started, we wanted to get that up and running first so people could use it. It is up and running. It is on the website, and we ask people, if you're gonna burn, to go to that. Click on it. It's right on the homepage. It says burning permits, and you can get right into that system. Uh, one more update, uh, another little bit of good news, news. Uh, the Ellis State legislation that was filed has passed, so the Ellis land is now protected by statute. The governor has signed that. Once we get a copy of it, we will then start the process of getting conservation restrictions on all that property and close that chapter out, uh, for all and for good, once and for all after, I don't know how many years we've been working on it. But that's good news that the governor has signed that and will now work on the conservation restrictions that are required as part of that process. That's what I have for tonight.
Thanks, Jim. As your report indicates, it's, it may be, uh, it may be closed to the public except by appointment, but the work of town hall is just chugging along and, and, and as we've been saying all the time, I just want, from the board, wanna thank all the town employees who just are figuring out how to get it done. So, uh, a little shout out there. Um, I do wanna note before we dive into our scheduled items that we did have, um, scheduled at nine o'clock a review of the Widow's Walk Clubhouse contract. That item has been removed from our agenda, so you're waiting around until nine o'clock to talk about that. I, I just wanna give you a little heads up on that. Um, and I think that's all I had to start with. Um, so the first item we have on our agenda is a discussion vote of Town of Citrus donations. The first of which is Chief Murphy is here to tell us about a very generous donation to the Fire Department dive team. So Chief, how are you?
Good evening. How you doing tonight?
Good.
Uh, we got a donation, annual donation from the Petroselli Insurance and Justice. Uh, Paul and Mark both live in town, and they make an annual donation, and typically goes to our dive team, and it will do that same thing this year uh, for the testing and upkeep of their equipment.
That's very generous and very much appreciated every year. Uh, is there any discussion about this item from the board?
No.
No? Would somebody care to make a motion on this matter?
Sure, and thank you, uh, to the Petrosellis. We move to accept the donation and accept the donation for $1,000 from Petroselli Insurance Company to the Citrus Fire Department dive team.
Move by Ms. Curran. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Is there any further discussion other than our heartfelt thanks to supporting our, our dive team? All right, seeing none, that'll be a, a roll call vote for this, please.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Great, thank you, Chief. We appreciate it, and thank, and extend our thanks to them as well.
I will do that. Thank you.
Okay. Um, we also have another donation from, uh, for two beautification. I don't know if, I didn't see Leslie Dineal on the, Leslie, are you on the list? On the, on this call? Um, or, or Ms. Humphrey? I don't see either one. Uh, Nancy, do you have the details on this? It's another generous donation to the beautification.
No, I do not have the details.
Okay, um, then I will.
Yeah, it was, it was just a general donation from the Pollard family.
Yeah, so it was a lovely $500 donation from the, I'm sorry, from the Pollard family?
Yes.
And, um, it was, it was directed to the Beautification Commission, which, as everyone knows, maintains all of our, um, our, our volunteer sites around town, so thank you so much. Does there a motion to accept this donation?
Move to accept the donation for, for $500 from Charles and Lena, Lena, I'm sorry, I hope I got that right, Pollard, to the Beautification Commission.
Move by Ms. Conley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Any further discussion?
Many thanks.
Many, many thanks again. Uh, then we will go to roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Thank you unanimously, uh, accepted and appreciated. Um, the next item on our agenda is discussion vote of the reservoir dam, water storage, and fishways design and permitting. And there you are, Mr. McCarthy has popped up from our DPW. It's like magic boxes when people show up. Um, Sean, this has obviously been long in the works. Do you wanna give a brief overview of the, where we are in the phase? Um, I think last time, when last we left this topic, we were going through the permitting fee, um, phase with DEP and, um, needed to get some, uh, check some boxes before we could go to this phase, so.
Right, yeah.
Outlining?
Thank you, madam chair members of the board. Um, a brief overview. The, the reservoir elevation project and fish ladder improvement project, um, has been working its way through the permitting process with denial from the local Conservation Commission, uh, basically due to the inundation, um, that will occur within the wetlands and, and outside the wetlands, creating new wetlands, um, by elevating the, uh, outflow structure. Last we left, um, they, our consultant Tetra Tech, uh, as well as subconsultants Corona Environmental and, uh, North and South River Watershed, um, prepared a draft environmental impact report. Um, what that allows the process to occur is state agencies, as well as state agencies, can provide input on what they'd like to see, um, occur as the project moves forward. Um, the contract before you tonight will answer the questions that were generated in the draft environmental impact report and generate a final impact, environmental report. And we've set this up, uh, with a phased approach so that they'll answer the questions to the agencies. They'll receive a certificate, uh, from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Once that's received, we will file a variance with DEP for the inundation or the, uh, disturbance to the over 5,000 square feet of wetlands. So, we've broken up the contract so that only segments will occur as approvals occur, meaning they'll answer the questions in a final environmental impact report and then file the variance with DEP um, to move forward with approximately 10 or 11 additional, uh, state and federal permits. They feel confident that we can work through the variance process with DEP. However, we can stop the contract, um, if need be, and the variance process is gonna be, um, too money-consuming at this point. Contract before you tonight is valued at $375,000, and as I say, we'll, we will use that as necessary, um, only billing what's required.
Okay, Sean, a quick question, so that the right to terminate the contract is entirely in our hands, is that what you're? I mean, we do have all the documents, but, okay.
That's correct.
Does the board have any questions about this contract? Mr. Goodrich?
So i- is this, uh, I mean, it seems exceedingly smart to do it this way, but is this usual to break it up in these tasks, and then after each task you can, I'm assuming after a task is complete, the determination is, has it been done like this before? Is this new? I mean, it seems like a really smart way to do it. I'm just, I'm curious.
Yeah, it's, well, it's not often that you have to go through the variance process, and then on top of that, comment from between 10 and 12 other, uh, agencies that will provide input in terms of what they wanna see. Uh, it will improve fish, fish passage as well as improve, uh, the dam in terms of, uh, the Office of Dam Safety, um, which we annually provide a report on the existing dam, um, that's out there. Everything's hanging on that variance with DEP, uh, and that's why they won't be allowed to continue on with the other permits until that's resolved. We don't wanna go too far and then find out we're, we're too deep.
Got it. Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Conley?
Uh, yes, when you say environmental impact, are the people surrounding this project considered part of the environment? What impact will this have on the neighbors?
They are notified. There's a, there's a, a large public outreach, um, section that will come up in this process of this contract, uh, as well to involve comment, not only from agencies, but from abutters, um, and actually the, the public at large.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Ms. Curran?
Uh, just one more, Sean, thank you. Um, what do you, what about timing with all of this? If we approve this tonight, what are we looking at?
Uh, the, they did give me a brief, um, timeline. I mean, this will bring the, the documents to basically construction level. Uh, this takes us all the way through bid and award, uh, of construction, so it is significantly long, I guess if I could put it that way. They anticipate permitting all through '21, uh, and the spring of '22, um, to obtain all the permits between DEP and water quality, the Army Corps, Mass DOT, uh, because the project is located along Route 3A, um, a state jurisdiction highway, Office of Dam Safety. They will be discussing mitigation. If we get, uh, that far, we'll need to obtain all the previous permits, before we do get to, um, you know, completing the design. They're at 90% right now. Uh, if that variance doesn't go through, the, the drawings won't progress any further. Uh, another, uh, money-saving, um, task at that point. Public outreach, uh, I was just trying to see, they're, they're looking at, um, spring of '23, uh, construction bids do.
And how long does it ta, how, how long does it take once, um, we get the bids back? How long does it take to, like, I don't know, is it excavating the area, like, the actual?
Yeah, we were discussing that, um, the other day, only because we were wondering if the project shouldn't occur when we need it the most. Um, you know, pushing them off, they have a spring bid opening, and I'm sure that's just how it laid out when they figured out when we were gonna get our permits. That we shouldn't do it in the summer and start construction in the fall. But really, the discussion is around the dam, and they would probably end up doing what we did with the two culverts on Bailey's and Gilson, uh, is to provide a bypass. So actually, the, the reservoir continues to function while the improvements are made to the dam, and the water will go around basically the dam and supply the treatment plant with the necessary water it needs. Um, so I, they've thought about it. It wasn't as concerned. It popped right up to me as, you know, that shouldn't occur during the summertime when we need the reservoir the most.
Right.
But I don't think that's gonna be a problem, at least when we were talking through it. It won't impact the use of it.
Further questions from the board? Mr. Vignani?
Sean, um, can you tell me what the increase in storage capacity, is it still that additional 30 days of use that we had talked about?
Yeah, it will, it'll increase the height by, uh, 18 inches or a foot and a half, which they, you know, we, we estimate is 30 days or a month's worth of, of, uh, additional water.
Great.
I think what we need to sell them on is that the reservoir isn't gonna stay that, you know, 18 inches high all year. Um, it may elevate that high in the spring, but then we use it. We start to let it in, and, and those levels will drop, um, you know, in and out throughout the season. So I, I think that's something we need to really, um, stress in the, in the final environmental report.
Right, and is the, is the most expensive part of the project actually doing the dredging? Or doing the, you know, the excavation?
Outfitting the outfall, uh, improvements to the fish ladder, uh, they will lower that, so that continues to work when it needs to work. Right now, those two spillways are at the same elevation, so once the water stops spilling over the reservoir, the fish ladder dries up. Um, so it wasn't constructed properly, I guess I could say, when, when they did it, or, or whether the science has changed. But most of the work will be contained around the dam that exists today. That's what it'll be.
I, I was thinking more financially, so it's $375,000 to get us to building. And then is there any estimate on what phase five is gonna be, to complete it?
The last time I, I looked at that, I thought it was around the million-dollar range. And I would assume that would change, uh, based on what type of mitigation, uh, they would be looking for, for the, the variance. Basically, if you fill this many wetlands, where are you gonna replicate them, or what are you gonna do, um, you know, to counter the impact of that? Um, I did happen to get an email today from the Army Corps, and they actually have, uh, a grant program coming up in the spring. Uh, and I don't know if it'll be too early to go for it or not, but it's, it's exactly that. It's, it's, uh, mitigation, uh, in, in this particular watershed.
Oh, great.
In that part of the state.
But, and is that the only part of the variance? The, the flooding wetlands and how we're gonna?
That I know of, that's the, that's the trigger.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what's causing the variance, the over 5,000 feet, square feet of disturbance to a wetland. That's what's tripping it.
Okay. Great, thanks, Sean.
You're welcome.
Any further questions from the board? This has been, how many years have this been, project been going on, so?
2014, I think it started.
Yeah, I know there are residents that wanna discuss this matter, but I, I just wanna pause for, very quickly. We, we skedaddled through the first two items, and Ms. Humphrey and Ms. Dineal have both jumped on, and I wanted to just let them know that we, we voted to accept the donation to the Beautification Commission, and just give you a second before we go to public comment on the, on the wells, so that we don't take up. But I'm sorry that we, we started without you, but Sean, uh, Seth, can I, can I interject here?
Yeah, of course, yes, they, they should be good. They can, they can turn the videos on, they can unmute themselves, they can.
Ladies, I'm sorry, we were so thrilled that we went right blasted through it, and very much appreciate the, the generous donation. But you like to just, uh, put your comments, and that would be wonderful.
Well, I just think it's so great. Um, I think this is the second year, uh, the Pollards have done this, and it's just really, really great, and means a lot to beautification, um, just reinforces, you know, we just try and do the best we can and try and make it pretty, and it's nice to see somebody recognize us, you know, for what we are trying to do. So, and I'm just glad that I, I was thinking I missed it, so I'm just glad that you've recognized that we were here.
I apologize.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Great.
And, and I want to concur with Leslie, and, uh, we are really excited about the ability to, you know, start another big project like we did, uh, over the past two years. With these donations.
Well, please extend the board's heartfelt thank you for that, and thank you to your committee for, for putting that money to such good use all the time, so we appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to continue this discussion with us, but we're gonna move back on to, uh,
Okay.
to the reservoir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Night.
Thank you, everyone, for allowing me to not let them wait any longer. There are hands raised on this, if the board does not have further just, uh, issues, uh, comments about the dam water contract. There's a phone number with a hand raised, so I don't know who you are, but if you could un, I'm gonna ask to unmute you, and if you could just identify yourself with name and address. It's a 781 ends in 033.
He or she is not responding, but we will try.
Oh, wait a minute, are you there?
I think I am.
There you are. Just your name and, um, address for the record.
Of course, of course. My name is Susan Vaughn, and, um, I am the new owner of 436 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. Um, I'm a direct abutter to the Tax Factory Pond. Um, and just last week was the first time I learned of the intention to raise the pond, um, by approximately 18 inches. And, um, I just, I, I thought I would take this opportunity, and I appreciate the board for listening to me. But, um, last week I used a transit, um, which I had access to, and I determined that the, the current reservoir water line was at the elevation of my basement floor. And that's with my sump pump running constantly. So I'm very concerned that if you're going to, you know, raise it another 18 inches, I'm going to have some serious issues with my home, which is, uh, an antique cape, um, and, you know, the, my actual property and its foundation. And, um, I'm also anxious to learn of any remediation plans that the town is going to provide for my home. Um, so that's one issue, and then, and then I, I'm not sure if you're all aware, but there's a very large paved section, uh, running through the pond. And, um, it's mostly underwater now, but in the summer it was quite visible, and I actually walked it. And I, I would think that deteriorating asphalt and tree stumps would not be healthy for any water supply reservoir. And my last point I wanna make is, um, as a direct abutter, I would like to be placed on, um, any communication list for this matter. It's been really discouraging and, and anxiety-causing to just learn of this last week after I've owned the house for 13 months. So, um, and I'd be happy to provide, you know, again, the spelling of my name, and my address is 436 Chief Justice, um, Cushing Highway. So those are my concerns. Um, I, I, I don't know, um, any direct person, you know, I mean, I spoke with, um, the, the head of the Department of Public Works this evening, and I've also spoken with Dan from Engineering. But I really don't know who to direct, who to address my direct concerns to and how they're specifically going to affect me, so.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. So we take those in reverse order? So the first is, how do we make sure that the folks who live around it are well-informed of each step? Have you guys got a plan for that right now?
Yeah, over and above the public outreach, any of the public hearings, the direct abutters will be notified as part of the notification process. When we appear back before the Conservation Commission. I would be happy to sit down with you, even if it's outside at the picnic table for a short time, show you some of the plans they have, excuse me, generated inundation plans, which shows you where they expect the water to expand to. Surface anyways. That I could review with you.
That would be great. I know the surface is going to raise, but then the water table, you know, the groundwater is really my concern too. You know, how it's going to seep.
Yep.
Part of this final phase too, they have additional investigations to do on private property. So we are still in the design phase of this. This isn't a guarantee, so to speak. You know, at this stage, there are hurdles that we are still working through. And being a direct abutter, you will be involved with.
Okay, thank you. And I would love to meet with you, so that would be great. This is Sean, right, that I'm speaking with?
Yes, it is. This is Vaughn.
Okay, super. Thank you, thank you.
I think, of course, now I have to remember the other questions. So the question about being able to clean up what's in those sites? I think that that's an environmental no-no, right? We're not allowed to go in there and dig stuff out?
I believe that's why you see the stumps, even when they first generated this. They didn't want.
Right, and the pavement?
Yeah, the pavement went out to a former wellhead. I certainly could discuss it with our environmental consultant that is assisting us through this whole permitting process in terms of how he feels that impact is, whether we should touch it or, you know, disturb it in any way, whether that's better or worse.
I think, Sean, the answer would be, any remediation where you would have to put a machine into the reservoir would be more problematic and potentially cause more issues than leaving what's in there in there. You know, you put a machine in there, it leaks oil, God forbid, something else, and just forget about it. So I think the answer would be, you just, you don't want to touch anything in there, just leave what's in there in there, because the cure could be worse than what's actually already there.
I think the last question was about remediation to abutters. And I think, Sean, you kind of alluded to that, that this is all part of the process. So they have to figure out the engineering first, figure out the impact, and then figure out how to remediate so that it isn't negatively impacting the abutters. Is that accurate, Sean?
Yes, that's correct.
So we're not there yet, but it'll be part of the conversation. You'll certainly be part of the process as they go through it for the next couple of years. Is there something I missed?
Okay, thank you. No, I don't think so. I don't think so. I appreciate your time, thank you very much, all of you.
Oh, no, thank you for calling, I appreciate your input. Are there any other hands raised on the matter of the contract for the reservoir? I do not see anybody on the list. Does the board have any other questions or concerns that they'd like to discuss about this matter? Decisible contract, obviously. Very good. Is anyone inclined to make a motion on this matter?
Move that the Board of Selectmen award the reservoir design and permitting contract to Tetra Tech Engineers for $375,000.
A move by Ms. Conley is their second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich. Any further discussion? Seeing none, sorry, I'm just scrolling through. This matter requires a roll call vote. Ms. Canfield? Yes. Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Great, the matter carries 5-0. Great, keep us in the loop, Sean.
Will do, thank you very much.
It is, okay.
Thank you.
And we are now on to our 705, which is a discussed vote of the Waterway Commission's proposed changes. And we do have Michael Gibbons, our Chair for Waterways Commission, and there's our harbor master, Stephen Moan. Gentlemen, thank you, I know that this has been a long road coming. Would you like to give an overview of the proposed changes?
Well, the mooring regulations, the change to the mooring regulations, it would allow the town of Situate to rent moorings to transient boaters. And I know that it's been discussed by, I believe, the board and the town administrator and by Waterways. And the purpose of that would be to get more boaters in town. Or boaters in town, you know, go and they spend money around town, so it's good for the economy, good for the local economy. And it really promotes Situate. So if you look on, I think it's page two, it shows the changes.
Yep.
Under G, it would just say.
Sections G and H would have the changes in.
So before us are three proposed changes. One is to sections G and H. Mike, do you want to just give the?
Sure, so just so everyone's clear, there's three items that we're asking the Select Board to review tonight and hopefully approve, one of which is the mooring regulations, the second of which is the Marina contract, which is for the Tom Marinas. And then the third item is actually a proposed rate increase for both the moorings and for the Tom Marina slipholders. So there's three items. Stephen was just nicely talking about the Marina mooring rules, excuse me, Marina mooring rules and regulations. So the couple edits that we have to the section of proposed changes are really in Section G. Not sure, Madam Chair, if you guys have the copies with you of what we're proposing?
We have the full backup, including the highlighted, so thank you for that.
Okay.
Yeah. So essentially, it looks like the, it clarifies that the authority for transient boaters rests with the harbor master. And transient moorings, it just, it adds a whole section about what the rules are regarding those transient moorings. You can't do more than a week in a 30-day period, that sort of thing. Is that accurate?
That's accurate. So the first change in G was really just to allow the harbor master the ability to rent moorings, because it was not in the mooring rules and regulations before. So that was item number one. That also will, will and should coincide with the proposed bylaw changes that we gave to you guys. I think it was last month's meeting.
Yes.
Which also addressed, one of the items was the ability for the town to rent moorings. And then H is really transient moorings, it's just some language was put in there to protect the town and said that the harbor master will set the rates, that they're allowing people to raft, but it's per the discretion of the harbor master. If the weather changes, they can cancel the reservations, or they can tell people they can't raft together. Those are the items that are there for, under Section G, excuse me, H rather.
Board, why don't we do, since there's three different motions, let's talk about them separately, just because they're different components, unless anyone has an objection to going proceeding that way? I assume that all of this has been reviewed by town council? James? The proposed bylaw language?
I haven't got anything back from it, but it has been sent to her, yes.
Okay, so anything we would approve, I would think would need to be pending, just to make sure we got our language. Does anyone have any questions about G and H as a proposed bylaw?
Well, these, just to be clear, this is not bylaw, this is just, yeah, mooring rules and regulations, yeah.
Yeah. Correct, does not need to go to town meeting.
Right, yeah.
Any questions from the board on those two items? No? I will, Mr. Goodrich?
Well, no, just for clarification, just to make sure. So this is just allowing, there's no like Airbnb for moorings? This is just allowing?
You bring your boat in.
I'm sorry.
You'd bring your boat into Situate, you were looking for, to stay overnight. You'd call the harbor master's office, and if you were looking for a mooring and we had one available, we'd assign it to you.
And you're going to sign it and you could?
Yeah, these are transient.
Charge a fee, okay, just making sure, okay. So Andrew, from a town standpoint, the slips that we have, we have transient slips where people can pull into the dock itself. And Stephen and his team manage that with Docwa, an app that's, people can come in from out of town, pull it up on their phone or their device, rent a slip that's overnight, but we never had the ability to rent moorings. Moorings were always kind of a separate entity, and we did not have anything in the rules and regulations that would allow the town to do that. Got it, okay, just trying to be as clear as possible, perfect.
Two follow-up questions on that. Steve, this is pretty much the norm, most harbors along the coast, right? I mean, I know that we're on the boat and we call up, the harbor master will let us know if there's a mooring available.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and you cannot do it through Docwa, this is just a call to you?
It would, well, it would be through, you could do it through Docwa as well.
Okay, so that's cool.
Yeah, I just meant you'd call the harbor master, meaning that's where you'd get the information from. This would also, I have to go to the Army Corps of Engineers for their approval as well, just so you're aware of that.
I honestly wasn't, why is that?
Because it's in federal, it's in federal waters, federal channels, you know.
Oh, okay.
They get approval on it.
Okay. All right. Does the board have any other questions about the transient moorings section? Is there anyone in the public who wants, we're going to talk specifically about the Sections G and H proposed? Raise your hand if you'd like to contribute. I don't see any. Ms. Conley?
Yeah, I just had a question on the transient moorings. Does this mean that you're going to have a certain amount of moorings that you will not let someone? It would have to be transient, so would you be holding back some four or five or whatever moorings in order to be able to do this? Or are you putting new moorings in?
Right now, we have three put aside that we would not be reissuing.
Okay.
And I think the number we were looking for was a total of five.
Makes sense, okay.
We start with the three, see how it goes, and just go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think it's a great idea for economic development too, and all of that. The next item you asked for is for some changes to the contract, which I believe the Marina contract, basically, it just clarifies what it means to have an ownership position in a boat? Is that, you want to just quickly run us through those changes?
Yeah, I think it was determined that we had made changes to the mooring agreement probably four or five years ago, I don't remember exactly what year it was, and there was language in there about ownership requirements for people that had moorings, right? Ownership of the vessel, right? In order to make that more synchronous with the slips and the slipholders, right? And the ownership of boats that are on slips, we added the same language that's in the mooring rules and regulations to the slipholders' contract agreement. So that is what is spelled out in item number three. Discusses the ownership, you know, must be 51% or more of the owner of record of the vessel needs to be on the paperwork as it's called out here. So that was the first proposed change on it. Items 24, and by the way, this was approved February of 2020 within the Waterways Commission. We're just getting around now to kind of getting the contract stuff done and getting the language finalized on it. So item 24 was really just an addition so that the harbor masters notified in the event that if someone is leaving, leaving at the end of the season, so that he knows that that slip is vacated, or at the beginning of the season, he wants to know when the people have come in for the first day. So that was what item 24 was added in for. Item number 25 was really just put in there so that if people are leaving and they're not using their slip, because they're away for a week or two weeks to Nantucket, to the vineyard, that they notify the harbor master's department so that the harbor master can use that slip to bring transient boaters into more slips than they normally have. It's been a practice, it's been in place for as far back as I can remember. I just don't think that we really had any teeth in it with people not kind of coming forward until we put it actually into the contract itself, so that people realize that they're supposed to be doing that. So I believe those are the only two changes, three changes, I should say.
Yeah, I believe you're correct, Mike.
Yeah.
And the transient mooring language comes out because it goes into the other regulations. Is that correct? Or?
Well, the Marina contract, it's separate from the mooring contract.
Okay.
So to make that, Madam Chair, to make that kind of synchronous with the mooring contract, we wanted the same language in there, because it's kind of the same thing, except one's on a mooring and one's in a slip, right? We just want to make sure the language matched each other, and we did not have it in the Marina contract before. So that's why it was being added in.
Great. Does the board have any questions about the additional language in the contract? Ms. Karen?
Hi, thank you, thanks, Mike and Stephen. I just have a question, I didn't ask this last week at the meeting, because it didn't dawn on me, because I don't think we reviewed this, as you said, you reviewed it in 2020, last February. Was there an impact study done on the ownership change for the slip owners at the Marina? Meaning, what percentage of the boats there, if any, are owned by more than two owners?
Right now, I don't, I don't see it. Very many boats that actually have multiple owners. This is to prevent people from selling their boat and then transferring the slip to the next person and circumventing that waitlist that happens on August 1st.
Right, okay, this one to double check, thank you. Any other questions about this, the contract changes proposed? Seeing none from the board, I'll open it up. Are there any comments or questions about the contract changes from the public? I see no hands raised. And so the final piece before us is changes to the fee structure, which hasn't happened in how many years? A very long time.
That is correct. I actually spoke with Mark Patterson, the former harbor master, and he was an assistant for a number of years before he took over as harbor master in 2006. Mark and I spoke at length, and he does not believe that during his tenure as harbor master, there was any rate increase. He believes that, as I was kind of told in the past, the, when the town bought Young's Boatyard, they actually lowered the rates over Young's Boatyard. However, in 2002 or '03, there was a change where they added a non-resident fee. So the rate did go up in like 2003 or 2004. And it was because, I guess, Waterways at the time and the town felt that, you know, the boaters, the residents should have a better rate because they're paying for the police, the fire, through their tax bill, where a non-resident's not paying into that. So that's, that was the reason for the higher rate.
Okay, so you're not, you're looking at a, basically, 10% increase. It's noted that this won't go into, if we approve, that it would not go into effect this voting season. It would be fiscal '22, because I assume you have your contracts in hand already, right?
Yes, so we collect all our revenue in April and May of this year for this past fiscal year. '22, the summer of fiscal year '22 starts July 1st, and we collect that revenue next April. So basically, a year. So, uh, basically a year, almost a little over a year from now.
Okay. Um, does anyone have any questions about the proposed rate fee structures? Nope. Okay.
Madam Chair, did we wanna read, did we wanna read them out loud for folks that may not have?
That's a very good suggestion. Would you like to do that or shall I?
Sure, I can if you want me to. Um, as a liaison, I'd be happy to do that to you.
I would be honored if you would.
So, so the recommendation from Waterways is a ten percent increase. Current slip fees for Situate residents is a hundred dollars, so that would move that to a hundred and ten dollars per foot. For non-residential rates on the slips, it is currently a hundred and forty dollars per foot. It would be increased to a hundred and fifty-four dollars per foot. And then the current mooring fees are six dollars per foot and the proposed new mooring fee is eight dollars per foot. The maintenance fee that is charged to all slip and mooring holders will remain at the current rate at a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Curran. Are there any?
Very well done.
Perfect.
I'm tired. I can read.
Well, she does a good job being our liaison to the Waterways.
We appreciate her too.
If the board doesn't have any questions about the proposed changes, I will once again see if anyone in the public would like to comment on these proposed changes from Waterways Commission. You can raise your hand. I do see one hand raised. Ms. Duckworth, we will ask you to unmute and please give your name and address for the record.
Hello, Kelly Duckworth, one fifty Hadley Drive, Hadley. I'm just wondering, um, why the, uh, rate increases are disproportionate between the slips and the moorings? The slips going up ten percent versus the moorings thirty percent, especially when, uh, Waterways fees were sort of slipped into the moorings fees for about a hundred and twenty dollars, uh, a few years ago. I just don't understand the rationale.
Which, who would like that?
I brought that up as well, and, um, it was discussed at the Waterways. Mike, do you wanna explain what Waterways decided?
Yeah, I, I would say we, Mrs. Duckworth, we, we kind of looked at it from, um, what the mooring fees were in surrounding areas. We did some research, kind of, um, I wanna say up from pretty much Waymouth down to the Cape, um, looking at a bunch of different harbors and looked at the highs and the lows, and we felt that the highs were anywhere nine dollars per foot and higher. The lows were where we were at six dollars a foot. We thought that the eight was kind of the right spot to be considering kind of what Situate has to offer from a mooring standpoint. You know, so we didn't really look at it as ten percent. Moorings versus slip fees, obviously a, if someone has a thirty-foot boat and they're going from a hundred and, you know, a hundred dollars to a hundred and ten is ten dollars a foot, right? Uh, to much bigger increase if they have a thirty-foot boat, for instance, than it is for someone going from six to eight dollars or two dollars. So it's just one of those things where a percentage really wouldn't apply. We didn't feel it would be equitable to everyone or, or as big of a deal if it was two dollars there versus, uh, you know, ten dollars or more on the, more, on the slips.
I can appreciate that, but the mooring, um, permities also have to deal with removing, um, and replacing tackle, initially purchasing it, and then also inspections. So those fees, I don't know if were considered or not in, um, your thoughts. And also the Waterways fees that were not previously applied to mooring, um, permities are, are now applied. So I think, um, you know, it, it just, you need to kind of look at the big picture and see if it's equitable to do this. And also, I know that when we leave our mooring, um, the, either town or one of the entities within the town running shuttle services often benefits from renting out our moorings overnight, and that's been done for the last twenty years. So I feel like I pay for my tackle, I have it inspected, I do my due diligence on it, and then some transient comes in through whatever means, and, um, they're able to use my mooring and tackle.
I would say, Stephen, that'd be a good one for you to tackle because, um, no one should be using your mooring without your permission, so.
That is correct. If, um, if somebody's using your mooring and you do not want them to be using your mooring when you leave, you can just let our office know. Uh, we do not today rent moorings. There are some of the launch services, whether it's the Boat Club or Easy Rider or the Yacht Club, they, they provide launch services and allow people to use moorings. Uh, they've gotten permission by the mooring holder to, to let them use. Uh, so it has not been done through the town. And i- if you, um, don't want somebody using your mooring, we can, you know, uh, speak with the Boat Club, the Yacht Club and Easy Rider and let them know that it's not to be used. But a lot of times, the mooring holder just makes the arrangement with the, any one of those three companies.
That's good to know. Thanks very much.
And just one last comment, Mrs. Duckworth. We, we did kind of look at what a, what an increase would look like for a mooring for a certain-sized boat versus a slip and kind of looked at the differences. And certainly it was a lot more to the, it was a much bigger increase to the people that are on the slips, even though it's, it's ten percent there and it's a bigger percentage for the mooring owners. It's still a much bigger dollar amount to the, uh, to the slipholders as far as an increase goes. Good questions, though.
Yeah, so just to clarify, was the, were moorings not, um, subject to a Waterway use maintenance fee before this proposal?
They were before this, I think what Mrs. Duckworth is referring to, and I can't remember what year it was, I wanna say it was two thousand sixteen, two thousand fifteen. There was an adjustment made to, um, the mooring fees because it wasn't broken up separately as, uh, the, the user's fee. So there was a lot of confusion around whether the mooring fee was included in the six dollars per foot or whether it was not. So there was an adjustment made at that time to make sure that everyone was paying the hundred and twenty-five dollar, uh, Waterways using, user fee.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, any further questions on these matters? Any, uh, questions from the public? I don't see any other hands raised. Um, okay, so we have three separate motions to consider. Is the board, uh, comfortable in, is, is anyone comfortable making any of those motions? I gotta find them.
I have them. Move to, move to accept changes to the mooring rules and regulations, section G and H, as recommended by the Situate Waterways Commission, effective immediately.
Moved by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Curran. Um, any further discussion on this matter? Should we?
I'm sorry, Ms. Canfield, um, you mentioned that you wanted to have these pending town council review.
Thank you, Ms. Devon. Yes, could we amend that motion?
Oh, amend the motion to include pending town council review.
And also Army Corps of Engineers.
And amended to add Army Corps of Engineers.
Moved and amended by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Curran. Um, any further discussions on that? Shall we have a, are we allowed to do a roll call on all three matters or should we take them separately?
I think we could do a roll call at the end, if that's okay with all of you.
I have no objection. Any objection from any board member? Seeing none, is there a second motion?
Um, move to accept changes to the Town of Situate Marina contract, numbers three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, as recommended by the Situate Waterways Commission, effective immediately and subject to approval by town council?
And Army Corps of Engineers.
And, and Army Corps of Engineers, okay.
Uh, seconded by Ms. Curran, moved by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Conley, uh, Curran. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Uh, third motion on the changes, price changes?
Move to change the Town of Situate slip fees to one hundred and ten dollars per foot for residents and a hundred and fifty, four dollars per foot for non-residents effective fiscal year twenty twenty-two, subject to anything else?
Nope, I think that one's good.
Okay, just checking. And finally, move to change the Town of Situate mooring fees to eight dollars per foot effective fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Moved by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Curran. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will, um, have a roll call vote on all four motions.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Biniani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
And Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
And motion, all four motions carry unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, for, for all the hard work to get to this point and for, uh, being stewards of our Waterways.
I think I'm next with the budget.
Yes, yes, Steve, don't go anywhere. You're next. Mike, you're welcome to continue.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome. I'll hang out for a bit. Thanks.
Yeah, keep him in mind, would you? So, yes, so that does move us to our seven-thirty, which is a continuation of our discussion and presentations on the fiscal twenty-two budgets. Uh, I'll give the board a second. Give me a second to grab the right folder. Because it's. And our first, because he's here, is on the Waterways, which is tab number sixty-six on, in our books. I will just remind the public that the Waterway, um, budget is maintained in an enterprise fund, meaning that its revenue sustained itself. So it's a little different than some of our other operating budgets. And I will turn it over to Harbor Master Moan. Um, if you could just, we, uh, we've been kind of jamming through these since the majority of, um, expenses related to each department are almost entirely personnel. Um, and so, um, if you wanna give us sort of an overview of sort of the, we, we know, we all know about the Cole Parkway project.
Yes.
They're the biggest thing on your agenda. If you wanna give us the overview and then we'll just quickly jump into.
Cole Park, the Cole Parkway project or?
No, no, you're just, in, in general, your, your department and, um, sort of the, the big accomplishments for this year and what you see on the horizon for next year.
Well, um, some of the big accomplishments this year were, um, obviously over the summer, we had a lot of search and rescues that were very successful. I'm very proud of my staff and what they did this year, um, how they handled themselves. Very closely with Waterways. Trying to find the page.
Now, I'll note to the public that the departmental accomplishments are single-spaced in the document available for all to see and two and a half pages long. So they were very busy this summer.
Yeah, so we worked with the, uh, town engineer, coastal resource officer on the Cole Parkway project. Worked, I also, uh, the department worked with the town engineer, coastal resource officer on the comprehensive dredge permit RFP that we put out on the street. Um, we received that back and we're reviewing that. You know, we made some repairs down at the town pier. One of the hoists this year, um, was, actually two of them were damaged, so, and one was repaired, the other one wasn't damaged bad enough for it to be repaired. It, it was just twisted a little bit. Uh, so we maintain that, we maintain, you know, um, the marina, the docks, the gangways. And we've been kind of holding together the marina and all the floats. Every, every day, my staff is out there putting, putting in more fasteners, more screws, uh, reinforcing plates, reinforcing boards. Uh, as you know, it's one of my capital projects to replace the floats down at Cole Parkway. Um, so that takes up a lot of time. We've, my staff has been out doing pumpouts, um, to keep the harbor cleaner. So that people aren't, you know, putting their waste into the harbor itself. We're gonna continue to train the staff on customer service and, uh, operations of the boats, all, all our navigation equipment that we now have on the boats. And how to, how to deal with, you know, um, some just somewhat disgruntled, uh, people due to just what's going on around the world these days, um, and the coronavirus. And we also spent a lot of time keeping after all the facilities at the harbor master's office, including the portageons that we had, uh, placed to both marinas, keeping those clean. Even though we had the company come in every day to clean them, we kept, we continued to clean them throughout the day. Uh, so that's just a few of the things that we've done throughout the year and what we continue to try to keep after.
Yeah, it was quite a year. I'm glad you brought up the, uh, the rescues because you and, and the fire department going out there and, it wasn't once, it wasn't twice. There was several times.
No, there was several. There was about, I think, twelve or thirteen people
Yeah.
that we ended up with and a dog.
So thank you for that. I, uh, and we're gonna get a new boat this summer? Is that happening?
We are, we are. Uh, the boat's about ninety-nine point nine percent done. We're just waiting for a door now. The final door, all the windows came in this week. So the boat is basically complete other than the, um, companionway door to get into the boat, and that should arrive sometime this week.
Hopefully all be vaccinated and we can have a great christening of that.
That'd be great.
So if we look at the numbers, the target for, for twenty twenty-one was one point, I mean, around one point one five nine. And, um, you requested one-two-six-four. Town administrator reduced that to one-two-five-six, which represents an increase of ninety-six thousand to your budget. The bulk of which looks like it's services and, uh, debt service?
It should be, uh, debt service and, um, um, personnel and also insurance. Maya, Maya left the, um, insurance, the Massachusetts Insurance Company that we had has, has left the marina insurance business. So we had to go out to, uh, the private sector to get insurance for the marinas. So that was a, uh, pretty substantial increase. Also, uh, we did not have any ice damage coverage for the marinas. Since we're now leaving the marinas in the water, we added the ice damage coverage to that as well. So that if we did have a problem, we would be covered. And then it was just personal services that went up. Other than that, we kept level spending.
Right, and, uh, the estimated revenue for the year is one point one seven six, uh, which will leave you with a deficit?
And that's why we raised the rates and that will make up the deficit.
Um, are there questions?
We will be down.
Okay. Uh, harbor, are there questions for the harbor master on the budget or, or the, uh, his report? All right, it's very thorough as usual. Yes, Mr. Biniani?
Yeah, this, I think this question is more for Nancy than Steve. Uh, and Steve, I, uh, thanks for making the difficult decision of raising the rates to, to cover the deficit. And Mike as well. Nancy, why is the indirect cost going up so much this year?
Uh, it's going up because of that new insurance policy.
Like fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, it's an extremely expensive, um, insurance policy plus they added ice damage. Uh, when we did get the quotes for the insurance policy, um, Stephen called around to other municipalities that have their own marinas and it was in the ballpark. Um, and that's probably why, um, our current insurance is not in that particular line of business because the losses were so great. Not our losses, but their experience was so bad.
So is this just liability insurance?
This is just for the peers and the docks, the, the increase.
Mike, well, certainly that justifies the rate increase. I mean, if our insurance goes up that much, you know, it's, it's, it goes to record of the user, so. Great, thanks.
Mr. Conley?
Mister?
Ms. Conley.
Woke me up. I, I thought the whole idea of getting the, being able to leave the slips in was because they're heated in some way. So why, why would there be ice damage if there's? So why, why would there be ice damage if there's heat?
There's not heat. What it is, is there's agitators that go in the water. They're stainless, stainless steel motors with propellers on them. We deploy them in the marina and it moves the warmer water up from the bottom and also turbulence the water on top, so the ice isn't allowed to freeze. But if we had a, a massive storm and we lost electricity for days, you could have ice damage. So we felt that it was really important to have ice damage, just in the event of that.
Yeah, there's, there's one other thing, too, is that if we have ice pack that really packs in the whole harbor and then that starts to outflow out of the harbor at some point, those bubblers that move in the water on, that's going to help stuff from freezing up around it, but if you have ice pack that's shifting, you could potentially damage your man, your marinas or your pilings. So that's why you need to have the insurance.
I hate insurance. Anyway.
Comment by Ms. Conley.
Just an editorial, yes.
Any other questions or comments about the Harbor Masters budget or his coming year? Hopefully, it'll, it'll be another fun-filled year out there without all the drama. Yeah, I just want to say thank you. I mean, if, if, if the public could only see all of the work that goes on down there during voting season, you know, they all work really hard. They have a great, great department. So thank you, Stephen, and your Supporting Waterways Committee to help you get through all the challenges during COVID. I know it wasn't easy, but you make it a, you know, a very pleasurable experience to vote in situ, so thank you.
I want to thank the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator, Nancy Holt, and the other departments. Without you guys, I would not be able to do my job, the support that I get from you all. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mike. All right. We're gonna, we're gonna continue our review in the water. We have our Shellfish Constable up next. There you are. Hi, Mike. DeMayo is here. And he has a small but important budget, and I know there's been a, you've had a very active year in Shellfish this year. Oh, you're, I think you're still muted, Mike. Mike, you're still muted. There you go. Hi. The budget's small. You, you, last year you had 8,800. This year you asked for 8,800. The town administrator required, recommended 8,800, so the budget's pretty straightforward. But can you give us an update? Do you have, do you have an update on, on the kerfuffle with our friends at, at FDA?
I actually do. I'll give you the quick no version. I was actually going to call today 1:00 for reclassification for Plymouth, Ducksbury, and Kingston. And they're getting some modifications as well for Shellfish. I recommended to Marine Fisheries that we should always work together, Plymouth, Marshall, Kingston, Ducksbury, Sichetra, Marshville, working together with these dye studies and reclassifications. So we're working to have like a mini task force, if you will, rather than Ducksbury, Plymouth, Kingston, doing dye studies and dilution studies, that Marshall and Sichetra should be included in those conversations and also areas of coacid. There's, which were dream plant and only Bassin Beach where it's been identified for oil hopper culture. So been a lot of discussions with the water quality going on. So we had a Shellfish meeting last week as well, as we were on that call. And we're also looking to ramp up sampling the Sichetra harbor as well.
Great. Any other updates that you'd like to use, use this time to update the board on?
No, the main thing is getting back to the way of the rivers that we had. It's going to take some time. I know there's been a lot of, a lot of discussion through the Shellfish Advisory Committee, and some people were not so happy with FDA kind of overarching their muscle onto the Marine Fisheries, then down to the locals. But I think we're garnering a lot of support. I know Speaker Josh Cutler's on the call today as well as others. And I know the state reps are all working together through our county's office and Patrick Carey's office. So it's not going unnoticed that we're not just going to go away. However, government has one speed and it's not fast. I'm expecting to get more honeydew vinegar. It's going to be a long flight, but I think in the end we'll be, we'll be in better shape rather than just calling and complaining and stopping our feet.
Very much appreciate that. Thank you for keeping the pressure on that. Does the board have any questions for our Shellfish Constable? Or any questions about the budget? Pretty straightforward. Appreciate you coming on to give us that update.
Anytime, I'd be happy to come forward and let you know where we stand. But we're having monthly Shellfish meetings now, so. The residents in the loop and updating the folks that will hopefully someday be oil hopper culture at Bassin Beach.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're scheduled to take up that matter in our executive session at the end of this meeting tonight.
You need for that session or no?
No, it's really some, no, thank you, though. We'll definitely call you when we need you, though. Don't go far. You don't have to stay up late with us. Great. Any other questions for our Shellfish Constable? All right, I don't see any here.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you so much. Thank you. The next is our facilities budget for, which is tab 440. Is wait a minute, can't find it. Is it 440?
Can't find it.
I'm missing.
It's 410.
410.
10, okay, thank you. 410, thank you. Is, oh, there's Mr. Kelly. Hello, Mr. Kelly. Where are you?
I am in front of a picture from the top of Lost and Tower.
Okay, I was, what if we put him in exile at the top of the tower now?
It's a nice picture, actually.
Included in our facilities budget. Before we get to the numbers, I would like to just give you an opportunity to just, it's been quite a year. I just, on behalf of the board, I mean, everybody in the town has stepped up to, to adjust to COVID. But it is, it is laid at your feet to make sure that we have the supplies and the cleaning stuff and the plexiglass and the signage everywhere. And thank you for just, like, it just happened. And I know it didn't just happen. I know it was a lot of hard work. So thank you for just shepherding all of that and making sure that our facilities have been safe during this pandemic. So, good job.
Thank you. It was, it was a lot of work. We had a lot of help and a lot of good support and a lot of help from people securing materials and supplies and some money from the county also, which helped make things go better. And then we spent a lot of time putting something in place, devising something in place and creating something and then hanging it and applying it that that we think will always be there. I mean, we've kind of got this vision that maybe some of those plexiglass things like we put in town hall and so forth, they, they, they may not come down. It's people, some people actually like them. So for more than just the PPE and just the piece. So it, it, it came out good. It, it looks good. People are receptive to it. The the custodial staff's done a great job with stepping up and wiping things down regularly and taking care of things and keeping all the staff at ease with visitors coming to the building and, you know, the, the new cleaning materials, new cleaning machines, and new cleaning protocols. So it's, it's been certainly on the top of the list of accomplishments or things, but there's certainly been a lot of people working on it. So it's been great. Thank you.
So, yeah, doing all that, plus doing everything you have to do anyway. So, thank you. Make sure everybody knows how much we appreciate just.
Yeah, one, one other piece to mention on that, it's part of under the accomplishments, is the, the time and money and people that have worked on the mechanical systems in all the buildings, increasing ventilation, making sure all the systems are working. You know, it's probably not good as a facility's got to sit here and say the buildings are working better than they ever have, but frankly, they are. They, they're, they're working very well. There's a lot of good things going on. You know, it, we spent a lot of money over the years on the last several, four, five years on the ESCO project in doing things in buildings and mechanical systems, but most of that money was on energy-saving measures and, you know, saving energy, putting new components and going to, you know, slicker electronics and doing things to save electricity and to put controls and to manage the systems. But we, we didn't spend a lot of time and money, because we didn't have it, on the actual systems themselves, if that makes any sense. So this past year, well, since last April, May, we, we spent a lot of, of effort on all the mechanical systems in all the buildings, and they're working great. It's, it's, it's really good. We've, we're only down to one or two problems in a few areas and we're working on resolving those now so that everybody can be in the building safely.
That's great. That's great to hear. And I know we have a new facility to open up soon.
Yes, very exciting.
Hopefully, we can use that new senior center soon.
And we have, while you mentioned that and we're talking about COVID, we have put some things there to address COVID and deal with that, with some UV lighting protection and some different adjustments we've made to the ventilation and so forth, anticipating that to be a concern.
Is there, are there other things that you'd like to mention to the board before we dive into the numbers, Mr. Kelly?
Just the new, the new senior center was another thing. And then on the Verizon for, for, for next year, looking, looking forward, you know, opening the new senior center and getting that up and running. And we're working on developing a, looking at developing a townwide maintenance program, working more closely with the schools. Right now, just Bobby, Dylan, and I, the Assistant Director, and he runs the school's facilities. We work closely on doing stuff, but we're looking at consolidating that more and making that more centralized and, and doing one thing and a, an automated work request system and making it one big happy system, which it should be or could be. So we're, we're trying to see if that will work.
Terrific. Mr. Goodrich, you look earnest.
It's, I guess I just, I really, I know you said it, but the people need to know how much work went in. I mean, everything, forget, don't forget, but all of the, the COVID things that have happened, but even the things like the signage, there's some improvements and things that your department has done that is just excellent. And I'm just, I'm so happy for what you've done. And if there's any silver lining, that hopefully we, you know, learned some lessons on the facility side, it's just, it's, it's wonderful to hear and see what you've done throughout the year. And I think the budget reflects that, and I'm just, it's, that's all. It's just, it's all, in that sense, for me, it's good news. So sorry for rambling, but.
No, thank you. It's appreciated. And again, there's a lot of people involved in it, so thank you.
So your budget's a little different than others because 34% is, is personnel services, where most budgets are, you know, 80, 90%. And then you've got a big chunk of your budget goes to utilities, and then the rest goes to everything else. So if I, if I look at the, the summary, your budget for 2021 was just shy of, just a little over $9 million. The requisition was for 1, 1, 1, 1,115,000 and change. And the, and the town administrator increased that to 1.2 million, representing a change of $144,000 from the prior year budget. Some of that reflects the onboarding of the new senior center.
Right, the, the new, the new senior center alone is like $32,000 add, just between the gas and electric. And there's an increase in technical services, which is for all, all buildings, for Comcast and for the new COD access system and the cameras and managing that. And some of that, a piece of that is also for the senior center. And then another add on my budget is, the, the town administrator has been kind enough to propose a, a part-time admin for facilities. And that's, I think it's 24 hours a week, $30,000.
Jim, you said that's our only increase on staff this year proposed, right?
Yes.
As of this time, there's only staff increase in any of the budgets, correct?
Okay. Sorry, Kevin, I interrupted you.
No, no, that's okay. I, I was just looking at the other things that jump off the page. On the R and M, we, we upped that a little anticipation of a few things, but a lot of that money that was up is, was moved around within the budget. But we did increase that, I think, 11,000 or 15,000 on that line item for the service contracts and maintenance agreements.
Okay. And the technical services, the, is the, the, the computer system that you're talking about, or no?
Yes, Comcast, COD access. And the cameras and managing all that.
Great. Does the board have any questions about this budget?
So Kevin answered my question with the part-time salary and just want to echo Andrew's gratitude, Kevin, to all your, your work this year. Crazy. So thank you for everything.
No, thank you. Again, I'm very fortunate. We work with a lot of good people and have a lot of good support. I, Nancy Holt has, has been amazing with, you know, it, it's like having our, our own little procurement officer in there with all the other things that Nancy has to do and helping us get all the stuff and find the things and find ways to manage the money to get it. Got a lot of support from Jim, and, and the guys have been great, the, the custodians and David Biagini, the maintenance guys and the school guys. Everybody has really stepped up. It's been great.
Great. Great.
Thank you. Thank all of you. Thank you for your support. Thank you.
Well, we'll probably let you out of the tower now.
It's getting cold up here.
All right. If there are any more questions for Kevin, you're welcome to spend the rest of the evening with us or, or not.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Good night. I wonder why the man behind the curtain popped up, because I thought there was something wrong, but no, Seth Bifer is our Director for Cable Television, and his budget is next at tab 159. Hold on a second. Usually Seth is magically behind the curtain, so we're happy to, let's, let's give him really hard questions, just because he never gets to be in front of the camera. Just like Kevin, your department has just blown it out of the water responding to COVID and making sure people are, know what's going on and, you know, walkthroughs through the, the, the school before. That made so many parents feel so comfortable, being able to see what their kids were going to walk into, the weekly updates, just all the stuff you did behind the curtain. We just can't thank you enough. So we know you don't get a lot of sleep, so.
I, I can make this pretty fast. For the record, Seth Bifer, Director of the TV, Town's TV Department. Our narrative, our numbers, they all sort of tie together, so I can jump straight to those numbers. Before I do any sort of budget presentation, I like to remind the board, along with anyone that is not familiar, Situate TV's budget is unlike any other department's in that we are not taxpayer-funded. We, our money comes from Comcast. We have a separate contract with them. So essentially, we have our own bank account that we pull from, and this money can only be used for Situate television, unless, of course, there is a town meeting approval on that. In case you're wondering, our current, our bank account, rather, is a little bit over a million, which sounds great, but keep in mind, too, that this is our lifeline. So the more we spend now, the more we shorten our lifeline. So with that said, if we look at our numbers, our budget-wise, no, no real big changes or anything. Salaries remain typically consistent with the usual annual increases. The bulk of our spending comes down to three elements. One is basic TV equipment. This we know we need, cameras, tripods, wireless microphones, handheld microphones, USBs, external hard drives. If you look at past budgets, the amount I put in there, we usually don't spend, but we need this. And just if you're not familiar, we are a very active group in that we, of course, film in a studio, but we also film around town. We film on good days, we film on bad days. We film on foot, we film on, in cars.
Santa Claus.
We film in cars, yes, yes. I have bruises still from that. We film on boats, too, which is fun. So the point is, is that we do take good care of our equipment, but we just need this sort of there to help us. Although we do film around town, there are certain locations we frequent, Public Safety Building, and this leads to number two, Public Safety Building, Town Hall, the library, very likely the new senior center. It's helpful for us to have equipment ready, available for us there, extension cords, lights, speaker systems. That's number two. Number three, and this is the largest amount, and I do want to point something out here, this is our wild card, and all of this could change, and I'll explain why here in a second. But we know that like every other department you'll hear. why here in a second. But we know that like every other department you'll hear from, the pandemic has dramatically altered our department in the way we operate and for instance, what we're doing here. I think the difference is, I believe, is that when some normalcy returns, and you'll hear other departments say we can get back to some normalcy, we can do this, we can do that. I think our department is forever changed in that this format that we're using, meaning how we're meeting now, people like. And more importantly, the information, the communication we're putting out there is huge. It's paramount. I mean, I can look at like analytics from things we're doing now. I mean, it's, it's tripled, if not quadrupled for across the board, no matter the department. So the goal is to try to figure out how, when some normalcy returns, and you all can get together in the same room, how do we combine the in-person element with the virtual element? So I've done some sort of private test runs with some departments, putting people in a room and then having people online as well. And honestly, it's been a little bit of a disaster. But, you know, I mean, this, I think everyone's trying to figure this out right now. So that's what this lump of money is for, to, there's new technologies, there are new software coming out, that I want the flexibility to experiment with it all, to see what works best. But again, this could all change. Why? Because as our town administrator, amazing town administrator, a very handsome town.
Somebody wants money.
As pointed out, that I.
How do you prove your budget, Seth?
Just checking, just checking. Open meeting laws do not allow for this format, meaning public officials, you have to be in a room, right? So I'm banking on the fact, or the idea, rather, that everything will change because of this. And, and if it doesn't, well then, I mean, the money's not going to be just lost. But, but I do believe that everyone is embracing this new technology. And so that's what this money really, really goes towards, trying to figure out how we make it all work, whether that is, I mean, like everybody has a computer in a room and there's a, a screen that's, that's virtual with people on it. And I'm not sure how they interact, but it's, it's, I wish I had more of an explanation to give for this money, but I, it's more of this idea that we know everything has changed and it is, we need to be flexible and experiment a little bit. So that's, that's really where that is. So that's what I have for you.
I personally could not agree more. I mean, we've learned so many good lessons through this trial, you know, trial and error of trying to communicate with people, you know, just simple things like share screening documents we're talking about, huge improvement to, you know, sitting in a room where nobody knows what we're looking at. So yeah, I commend you. If you can, you know, use this, this weird time to try to move things forward. I do have one question about access though. When we do get together, are we finally going to be able to broadcast out of the library big room yet?
Well, that's a great question. I'm glad you brought that up, Comcast rather. So last, so yes, sort of. I mean, here's the deal with the Comcast situation. So once again, we have, we have signals within, within town hall, which we know, we have the public safety building and we have the library. And those worked up. With that said, at the end of 2019, I got with Comcast, we opted to sort of change the output of how that signal in those buildings would go. I mean, if you know there are cameras within those two locations, meaning public safety specifically and the library, I've never really been happy with them. They were sort of put in place before I came along, but that's fine. And what really the impetus for this was the idea of from the public safety building is being able to plug a camera into that Comcast signal. So that is when I talked to Chief Thompson and Chief Murphy, the idea being that we could go sort of outside the EOS, the operations, the emergency operations center to film things live and do it online as well. So we did that. We had to do some more testing that led into 2020 and then pandemic it. So we're right there.
Okay. Good. Well, you got a little time before we can use it, but that's, that'll be great.
Yes.
Seth, thank you for that. Is, does the board have questions? I think we're all very much aware of how your contributions this year. Any questions about the budget or, or cable TV?
I think you covered it. God bless you. Ms. Conley.
Thank you.
God bless you. I have a quick question. I don't know if it's Seth or Nancy. What do we get annually from the PEG grant that continues to fund this line?
Over $100,000 a year.
100?
Yeah, over $100,000 a year.
Okay. Great. And yes, Seth, thank you. Yeoman's work. Crazy. Thank you for everything.
You got it.
Thank you.
I was actually gonna go down the same path as Maura, that it is, you know, that, you know, $1.18 on your cable bill every month, you know, you're actually paying for, you know, public television essentially. So, so the money's going to keep coming in and we have to use it and it's very specific as to what we can use it for. So, you know, Seth, you've got to, you're putting it to good use and you need to continue to do that. And I just want to say one quick thing. We've all run into Seth every day of the week, every hour of the day. And, you know, your work ethic and your work, work competency is just shown all the time. So thank you very much for your service and, and really the extra steps that you've taken during this crazy times that we're all living in. So I really appreciate it.
Yay.
And the public appreciates it too, right? You know, I get nothing but compliments at the, yeah, at the improved outreach, Seth, that you've allowed us all to do. So thank you. And all the committee members always comment how fabulous you are to help them through, you know, technical challenges. So can't thank you and Brianna enough.
You got it.
Ms. Conley. Yeah, I'd like to thank Seth, especially because when we film the COVID updates in the morning, they don't look so great. But once you take them back and add your graphics and add the music, they actually are good to watch. And if we had to do it without those graphics and without all that, they would be deadly. So thank you.
Beg your pardon. Terrific. All right, Mr. Goodrich.
I just want to say thank you, especially if you're willing to try and experiment and see what, what new things we can do. And don't forget, we just, that dive team for the fire department, you can round out some underwater filming, you know, we can serve around.
Got a wet suit? Got an extra wet suit?
That's really not funny. That's not funny.
Yeah, kinda. All right. Well, would you like to go behind the curtain again, sir?
Yes, yes.
All right. Thank you, Seth. All right. Which brings us, I believe, to the last budget for the, well, two budgets for the, oh, no, I'm, I got page two, sorry. But it's all under Pam. Our treasure collector is here and we're going to go through per line items, which start on page 145. And we'll also discuss foreclosures, debt service, Plymouth County Retirement, contributory insurance and federal taxes. You have all the fun stuff. How are you, Pam?
You. Well, thank you for having me. I do want to give props to Kevin Kelly and Seth and actually all the departments that have worked really hard during this crazy time and especially mine. We are considered essential. My staff has been here. Even when we were trying to do stagger staffing, my staff had to be here. We had taxes that are due. We had beach and transfer station stickers. Everybody wanted to go to the beach. So I want to give props to my department. We are still on a 90-plus percentage of collection rates. We certainly did not lag at all during this time. They have worked really hard and they have all been in here in, in this office every day. So I do want to give props to my department. Again, we've made concessions to make it easier for COVID by more payments being online. I've got the town clerk online now with her fees. I have the council on aging online now with their fees. I have the school department online. I have the student activity issues on, you know, projects and T-shirt sales that they do to raise money. That's all online now. Just went up a couple of weeks ago. And as Jim brought up, we have a new permitting system. So Mike and I got that all up and running before, within a week, which was a lot of work actually on my end to getting all the banking done. So I'm glad that worked out and people can now, you know, we've worked really hard to make it easier for our residents. We do a lot of communication on the phone, we email, we, we do whatever they need. And most of them, I totally understand. But again, it's hard when people have to be told they don't have to come in to see us to pay their real estate bill. Although we love to see you, now's not the time. So we've definitely made concessions for that. And, you know, our sticker sales have increased because of course, we have more people that want to go to the beach now. We have more residents in town, which has also, you know, that load on my department has definitely increased. But we're posting payments, getting them to the bank. I tell everybody, the cash comes in through us and it goes out through us. So we are definitely an essential part of running the town. And I just want to thank everyone for, you know, their patience with us. So my big part of my budget is, that's pretty much all my accomplishments. I mean, again, I have about a page and a half, but I just really want to say the COVID part of it is the big accomplishment, I think. You know, the rest of it, I consider part of my job. So this has just been an addition to parts of our jobs. A big part of my whole budget is cost personnel, like it is in most departments. The rest really is level funded. There isn't any increase really besides the personnel increases. There's just, you know, a little bit here and there, but nothing substantial. So.
Just, just quick, just for the, for the record, the treasure collector budget for fiscal '21 was $418,000, most of which was salary. The budget request was for $426,000, which is what the town administrator recommended, which gave a grand increase of $8,000 from the prior year, which is, is really almost entirely, no, it's entirely to do with salary adjustments.
Correct. So that's all I have to say about treasure collector budget. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions about that? Mr. Goodrich, you looked up.
Yeah, so I guess on some of the liens and payment plans.
We'll be getting to that in our next little chit chat.
All right. Yes, all right. We'll get, we'll get that.
That's the next tab. Yeah, no, and please extend. I mean, it's, in addition to just doing your normal job, as you've, you said, you had to figure out how to do your job in a pandemic and then work with all these other departments to facilitate that. So it's just everyone, I wish, I wish everybody could take a month off and just relax because it's been crazy. But.
Yeah, actually.
Thank you for, for all of that. Thank everybody in your department because I see the, I see the Lysol wipes behind you and I know you guys have been there every day.
We have, yeah.
All right. So the next tab, as Mr. Goodrich alludes to, is number 158, which is the foreclosure budget line.
Yes. So this is level funded budget pretty much every year. It is, the money goes towards the collection process and being able to use a tax attorney to help me collect tax liens and make, it's good when the treasure collector tries to collect a tax, outstanding tax, but when they get a letter from an attorney, it's a, it's a much better collection process. Of course, with the times, we, we are advertising in the paper and it will be posted by the end of this month for the outstanding FY '20, outstanding real estate taxes. We have about 63 parcels that we'll be advertising, just getting the finals for the paper ready this week. So they'll be ready to go next week.
And you said fiscal '20, so that's outside of the current moratoriums.
Correct. And we really have to stay up. I know with COVID, it is a little, we are, you know, advertising a couple of more properties than we usually have in the past. But, you know, the town has to protect itself. And, you know, I am, more payment plans or meeting with people over the phone or conference calls, I've certainly been doing that. I've definitely backed off collecting tax liens in the last 10, 11 months because people having hard times. But I must admit, I am going to start up again. I've been able to collect some tax liens, bringing out some, almost $200,000 already in the first six months because of our residents taking advantage of this low interest rate environment. I mean, you can borrow money, you can get a loan, you can sell your house. I mean, so we've definitely prospered with some of that happening. So I've, you know, tried to help people, you know, get, get through that process. But again, I have to protect my job and that's what you guys hire me to do. So I am moving forward with FY '20 leads.
Are there any questions about the tax foreclosure section? Okay. Andrew, are you?
Yeah, it's, this is more for edification. I think this is more, this is more into like, I don't know if you read the article in yesterday's Boston Globe, are we one of the company, are we one of the towns that would, that uses a private company for a tax lien?
No.
Okay.
We do not sell our tax liens. We, I'm the tax lien guy.
Okay. So that's, I just want to know. And I was reading, I was going through and.
And as long as I'm the tax lien guy, we will not sell our tax liens to Talich.
That is music to my ears. And thank you for being so amenable for some, for some of these folks with these payment plans who are going through a difficult time. So Pam, thank you. And, and the folks in your office. I just wanted to clarify, just so folks at home know, do that as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
So the next tab is 720, which is the debt section.
So debt is always a fun subject, but I have some great news.
Okay.
Jim, Jim and Nancy let me do it. That was so, I'm so excited, actually. So Nancy and myself met with the financial advisors today. And because of our low interest rate environment, the town is able to reissue some 2008 bond and a 2011 bond, we can call, callable bonds. And we can save the town an estimated $480,000. And it's mostly in water and sewer, which we really need the money in water and sewer. We probably wouldn't see the savings though until FY '22. But we, we want to get your blessing on moving forward with that refinance, callable bonds, refinancing the bonds. And what we'll do too, because the interest rates are so low, we will also add some projects that we have going on now and get those in, all in there now. Because, you know, who knows what's going to happen with the interest rates. But right now, it's definitely still the time to borrow. And we just had an S and P review in November, but unfortunately, we'll have to have another one now also. But I don't really see any big changes. Like Nancy said, we're going to try to beat the 28 minutes of our review with S and P that we had last time because it went so well. So that's our good news and we hope to save lots and lots of money. It's nice to have callable bonds.
Does anyone on the board have an objection to them going forward with this plan? That's awesome. That's awesome. So, so does that directly impact, oh, no, you said it won't be until 20, the next budget that we would see that with the benefits. Great.
It'll be in this, in this budget. It'll be in, not this year, not 21, it'll be in 22.
Right.
Nancy, like Nancy had said today, with the financial advisors, we're going to push this through. It's going to be a quick process. I'll probably come in front of you on February 23rd to review the sale. We want to get going. So when the town meeting comes again, we can get it on the warrant and meet with the finance, fiscal finance committee and, you know, do, take down the budget number maybe for debt. We'll see how it goes, but we want to get it all said and done before we go off to town meeting.
Terrific.
Great job.
Yeah, great. It's great to have a callable bond. I know I saved millions.
Now you got to follow up with a conversation about the Plymouth County retirement.
Yeah. So does anybody have any questions on debt? We're good.
That's good. I think, I think you got that one out of the park.
Yeah. Okay, so the bummer one, Plymouth County retirement. Unfortunately, we have a higher increase this year than we had previously been told. I know you as are all aware of the unfunded liability that we have in Plymouth County. As of January 1st, 2020, the unfunded liability is 61% funded. The unfunded part is still $693,000. So they're hoping to be, have the unfunded liability still done by 2029 or 2030. The town assituate pays their contribution to Plymouth County. Once a year, you are given the opportunity for semi, semi annual payments. But we pay it all up at once and we are going to save $109,000 this year by doing that. So that's pretty much all I have to say.
Yeah, I mean, just order of magnitude, in 2019, this line item was 4.8 million. In 20, and so, and now 2019, three years later, the, the department budget is $5.8 million. And it's really not something we can control. It's set at the county level, correct? I mean, we vote, but yeah.
I have been attending more of the board meetings. So I could zoom in and listen to what's going on there. So I learn a little bit more about what's going on. Plymouth County has bought a building. The retirement system has bought their own building in Plymouth, so they will be moving, but they won't be renting a building anymore. They bought it outright, so no mortgage. So they're thinking that they'll save some money on that down the road, of course. But not much else has changed. I, I did ask why we increased so much. And I got the explanation that we have more employees in the system now. So I don't, like, like you said, it is what it is. And the advisory board has requested Plymouth County to come in and talk to them. So maybe the board would like that also at some point.
Yeah, maybe we'll can piggyback on that. That'd be good. Any other questions about yes, most current? Pam, what did other towns increase? Did everybody see 10% or where do we fall?
Situate did see one of the largest increases, to be perfectly honest with you. But, you know, we, the last couple of years, we were told we were going to have at least an 8% increase. And we really haven't. We haven't got there yet. So, I mean, a couple of years ago, it was only 3.1% increase. Remember when we were told about the unfunded liability that we would at least face 8%? So I really think Situate has made out okay so far. I mean, this year wasn't so great. But next year, it's only going to increase by 8%. So, and we already have been told that. We fall, we fall on the high side, definitely on the higher side.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Am I crazy to worry about this a lot? I mean, 130 million in unfunded liability. I mean, it, is there any, I don't know if there, is there any vehicle for us to try to, I mean, I don't want to say touch the third rail so we have to start paying more. But, I mean, how, how do we close this gap? Because it's, I don't understand even on the tables how we're going to close this in time with people living so much longer.
Right. Well, they've supposedly adjusted the mortality tables. The actuary, the actuarially, the actual report will be, is online if you should take a look at it. For Plymouth County, they just came out with their new one. They also just came out with their 2021 budget is also online. Maybe you could rip that apart a little bit. But they do tell us that they will be fully funded by 2029 or 2030. And just think of the money Situate's going to save after that. We can put it all in OPEB. So speak of OPEB, as you know, I just like to mention it because it is on our financial policies that we give 2% to OPEB, to 2% of Plymouth County Retirement Assessment to the OPEB fund. So I did want to mention that and I know Nancy has been before you to update the financial policies. And there is an update in there for OPEB. I'm really excited about. Tony is, right, Tom?
Yes. Tony's favorite topic.
And right now, as of December 31st, there was $1.4 million in the OPEB fund. And we are still $123 million unfunded. So.
Tony, would you care to comment?
We're making good progress.
Making progress. All right. I, so contributory insurance, 914, if we want to move on.
Okay, so that is our, Maya, Maya, we work with Maya for this budget item, of course. We were, Jim and Nancy and myself met with our Maya representative and she suggested that we do an 8% increase as of now to estimate our, our changes. We should get a better number this month, late this month, early next month. As you all know, the conferences this week, this week, the end of this week, the MMA conference, they usually come out with it around then, a little after the conference or during the conference sometimes. So hopefully it won't be as bad as 8%, but we felt comfortable going with that number. Of course, with COVID, there's many spouses that have lost their jobs. Though we've seen it definitely increase on people coming into our insurance, onto the town's insurance. So of course, that's going to increase our insurance. But I mean, for an individual plan, for a yearly average is, costs the town $7,000. And for a family plan, the average cost is $15,500. So a lot of people have left their jobs, even in Situate, have decided not to come back to work right now during COVID. But they still are on our insurance plan. They direct, their direct pays, which has definitely increased. And that's more of a workload too for my department to keep those people on a timely payment plan. And also we have our retirees that are direct pays and they are, we have 37 retirees on our health insurance right now. The goods part of health insurance is the medics rates did not go up. They did not change.
Great. Are there any questions about the contributory insurance line items? Just for the record, it was, the budget for last year was 6.3, I'm rounding, 6.3 million. This year, it's 6.7 million, increase of $420,000. Right? And then the last item under your bucket is federal taxes under TAB 916.
Okay, and that is just really a 4% increase over last year. That's pretty much what we do every year. And they just fluctuate in employee, in employment changes, wages, wages increases. So that's pretty much, it is what it is.
So last year was 780,000. This year, it's requested 811,000 with an increase of 31,000, which is a straight up 4%. So any questions about the federal tax line item? Nope, everyone's shaking their heads. Terrific. And well, thank you so much, Pam.
Thank you.
For all your hard work and please extend it to the department that we, we see them and appreciate them being there.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that concludes the review of our fiscal 22 budget presentations. We're now on to our 8:30. I'm happy to know only two minutes of schedule, which is a discussion vote of the Water Resources Commission's bylaw change recommendations. And we have Becky Malabut, who is our chair, longstanding chair of this committee, here to run us through the proposed changes, which I'm going to pull up here. How are you, Becky?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. So, sorry, I've got, I've got a couple of screens going here. I'm trying to pull up the right documents here.
No problem. Take your time. I will take many kudos on this timing. I've never presented so close to my time on the agenda, so.
You know what? We're trying to, we try to, we try to be timely, so.
That's great.
Why don't you just give the 30,000 foot view of this and then we can launch into the specifics?
So our initial plan was to look at increasing the fines for violating the outdoor water use ban. The current fines are pretty small. The first is a warning, the second is $50, the third is $100, and then it's $100 for every subsequent violation. And this summer, we had one resident, for example, had got 28 $100 fines. So clearly, the fine isn't keeping people from violating the outdoor water use restriction. So we wanted to look to increase it to hopefully, maybe it wouldn't hit that one resident with the 2800 fines, but maybe it would keep some of the other residents from, from not watering when they're not supposed to. So the fines are outlined or stated in the bylaw. So when we took a look, a look at the water conservation portion of the general bylaw, it's quite small. All it does, it gives the select board the authority to institute or institute the restrictions each year. And it, that shows, states the fines. So we then learned that, you know, the nuts and bolts of the outdoor water use restriction live in our Water Management Act permit, as well as basically just in the presentations that the water department brings to the select board throughout the season. So we thought, why not take this opportunity to just bring everything into one place? So we outlined the tiers. Well, we've created tiers now before. There wasn't, there were four levels of the violation, but there's nothing to, with the exception of the total outdoor watering ban, there's nothing to define them. So we created four tiers. Nothing has changed about the restrictions themselves, but we just, like I said, created the tiers. We've added a lot of language that comes from a model bylaw that the state has put out for towns to use. And what else did we do were some of the other major things. We increased the fines, so we still have a warning for the first violation. It's now $100 for the second violation, $200 for the third violation, $300 for the fourth, and then 300 for all subsequent violations. And that is the maximum amount, maximum fine that we can institute or implement. We also specify here in section 10 that no new irrigation systems can hook up to town water. That has been a policy since 2016, but putting into this bylaw will give it a lot more teeth than it currently has. And we also are requiring registration for all in-ground irrigation systems. In the work that we were doing to update the bylaw, we found that the town doesn't have a list of in, in the in-ground irrigation systems, including private wells. So this would just be, like I said, a registration that would just have the address. It also, as part of the, the no new irrigation systems, the fact that no new irrigation systems can hook up to town water, it also restates what's currently in the Board of Health private well regulations that if you have a private well for irrigation, you need to have a sign at the bottom of your driveway. And that is so that if somebody does see you watering when you shouldn't be watering, you can, you know, if they see the private well sign, they'll know that private well owners are not, don't have to follow the outdoor water use restriction. So having that sign lets people know that you kind of are allowed to be watering, among other things. So it just restates what's also in the Board of Health regulations. So what else? So this has been, I reviewed this with town council a number of times. This is her language, a lot of it is, you know, her language and her recommendations. I've had some feedback from the water department. And then the DPW and members of the planning board have also received copies to review, but I haven't received any feedback from them. So I guess our goal, you know, and the other thing I didn't mention is just, you know, maybe this is assumed, is to have everything in one place to make it easier for residents to locate and understand the outdoor water use restrictions. As I mentioned, right now, they're in three disparate parts. You see the signs changing throughout town, but it's very difficult to find the information. So it just adds a little, a level of transparency to the process.
Okay, thanks, Beck. So you're looking for us to provide your comments for this? Not to necessarily bless the document that's already presented or where, where are you? You, you're endeavor, you want to get this on town meeting warrant? So, yeah.
So this is my first time going through that process, you know, I'm not sure. If you have comments, then I will take them and, and then we can rework it as needed. Or if it's something that you guys want to bless tonight, fantastic, but, you know.
That would be your first choice. Okay.
Right. But no, well, no, I mean, I want it to be a good, solid bylaw, so.
No, I, I know that your committee, you've been working on this for a very long time. I think that the concept of putting it in one place and making it transparent has some real merit. You know, as everything, as all of these things are the devils in the details. So I know I do have some questions, but I'd like to just ask the board if they'd like to jump in on this first. Ms. Conley is raising.
Yes, when, when the, when you say that no new irrigation systems will be able to hook up to town water, it raises the question in my mind about potentially future fields that we may want to build. And if the town is not allowed to build a field of natural turf, are we subject to the same regulations be caught, or the same regulation? Because I know it caused a lot of trouble up at the Cushing Field when we ran into the issue of being able to irrigate that field. And subsequent problems created a situation where that field was pretty badly damaged. And efforts to find a well after the fact proved fruitless, as I recall. So I just want to be sure that we know that we're either committing to putting artificial turf onto future fields that we may build, or that we give the town an exemption for athletic fields.
Yes, so I hear that comment and I think we, this doesn't currently exempt the town. You know, I can put it back to the committee and see what people think about that. And then we can either incorporate it or not.
It doesn't exempt the town, but you do have an exemption regarding the irrigation of public fields. Which is one of my questions. Yeah.
But, but Karen, what they're talking about is and so I just don't want to tie our hands. Because if we, for example, Clap Road, you know, with you know, if we decide to put a football, a baseball field out there, or we find somewhere else we want to put a new field on, I would like to think that we have, as a town, the, you know, opportunity to install an irrigation system that is hooked up to the town water supply if we have to go that route. Because we've already been through the fight over artificial turf fields. I'm not sure that, you know, we necessarily want to go through that again. I just want to have, give the town flexibility to be able to do what it thinks is best for the citizens of the town.
I hear that. And I will say that, you know, there was some disappointment that I don't believe at the Cushing Field, anybody explored rainwater capture, cisterns, anything of that nature. So maybe we can do an exemption and kind of include some of that language, that if they're not able to drill a private well, and they're not able to, there's no opportunity for an underground cistern or whatever it may be, then the town will be exempt from this. I think that would be something that people would be amenable to.
Yeah, I think, I think that personally, you know, any sort of greener alternative to hooking up to the town water supply for an irrigation system is preferable, but it's not necessarily always possible. So that's, that's my point. And I just had one other question about who collects the fines for outdoor, for the ban?
So it, the fines are currently, go on your water bill? And, you know, and, yeah, so you're supposed to pay the fine with your water bill. That is the kind of the simple answer. I think there's a hope that some, at some point, we maybe could change that, and that it could be a true ticket or violation through the police department, because these bills can sit on your water bill for quite some time, and may not come up until you try to sell your house, and there could be a lien put on your house. So if we were able to have a system of collecting the fees or the fines in a more efficient manner, that would be great, too. So we kind of left the language a little bit open-ended in case that structure does change. We don't specify it in the bylaw.
Who hands out the tickets now?
The DPW, Water Department.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, there was a time during the drought of 2016 where they did bring in police, because it was getting pretty contentious. But there, they just handed over the ticket. The ticket was still tied to the water bill. So again, there's kind of hope, too. You know, there is definitely an issue with enforcement. We all know our water department has very strict resources. So there is a hope that maybe there might be a third party who could come in and handle the enforcement of it, including the fines, the collection of fines and the handing out of tickets, as well as just the, you know, going around town and seeing who might be violating it. But that, you know, isn't currently an option.
And finally, pools. I have a real issue related to pools, because most people's pools are in their backyards, so you can't see them violating.
Right.
And it seems to me as though when we have a drought, what happens to the pools is that they evaporate, too. And then people start filling their pools with their hoses. So I feel as though we're focusing on, rightly so, the irrigation systems, but I think there's a whole other world out there of pool filling.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. And that is something we're trying to address, just in overall with education and outreach. We'll be doing some outreach to pool companies and to residents directly if we can. And then also, that's the other point of this bylaw, is, you know, for people who are new residents or people who look at your town's bylaws, you might not realize where, where the pool filling falls into the violation. And there is a lot that happens behind the house, in addition to the pools. So I think the best, unless you have, you know, whatever, any, I'll take any and all ideas, but right now, we're thinking the best way to manage those are through education and outreach.
And drones, maybe.
Right. There you go. Thank you.
Goodrich, you have additional comments?
Yeah, so I wanted to, a little bit on, on the irrigation, because you, I think, Karen, you bring up a great point. But there is, one of the other issues that the committee worked through so well is also some of the definitions. So some of the, how some of these apply are only to water customers. So, because I don't want to speak for the committee, but I do think some of the, some of those were definitely geared towards just customers as well, and how those are better defined. But really, this, I mean, 99% of this is bringing all this in for us to see of things that are, that we're already doing. And it's just, again, it's really wonderful work by your committee, Becky, so thank you. But yeah, I will double check to make sure that, I really thought that some of that was about customers.
It is. And we do use water users, and I think the only time we refer to water users to be all users of water in the town, including private well owners, is when we encourage, when we, in terms of the registration of the in-ground irrigation systems. And we also do encourage that private well owners or that all water users follow the tiers, especially as the tiers get higher, even if you're not required to.
Any other questions, Mr. Goodrich? Any, any other board questions, comments? Okay. Becky, I did have just a couple of things. So one thing that in going, we've been working on, and another committee is doing the charter review, charter review committee, is looking at, you know, the language in the charter. And, and a thing that keeps coming up in discussion is what belongs in that document, what belongs in bylaws, what, what actually can inhibit flexibility? And I think that what you proposed, a lot of it, I think, makes perfect sense to put in a bylaw, makes it very clear. One of the things, though, that I was concerned about actually putting in the bylaws was the specific amount of the fees.
Okay.
Only because then to change it, we have to go to town meeting.
Right.
And, you know, as we all sort of struggled through, how do we increase enforcement? I'm concerned that maybe that actually specify, I mean, maybe we can change that to say there will be an incrementally, make it a percentage or something, and that that, that number would be decided by the water commissioners or something. I just, I felt like, you know, when you put it in a bylaw, it's easier to change than town, than a charter, obviously. It still requires you to go back to town meeting. So that was just a flexibility thing. I want, if you guys could think about that. I don't know if the board would agree that that's something that might need to be just, just to give us flexibility without having to, to go back to town meetings should we find that that schedule doesn't work exactly right.
Right. And kind of to that point, we've been working for more than just this past year to increase the fines. But because it has been so cumbersome to do so through the bylaw change, it wasn't until we kind of had this bigger, broader bylaw change that it made sense to present the whole bylaw. So.
I love the idea of increasing it, and I think we talked about that multiple times.
Right.
I just don't know if it, it just structurally belongs in a bylaw.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it is now. So we would be, end up taking it out.
Oh, that's right.
Put it into, we'd have to figure out where it would go and what the language would be.
Okay. Jim, do you have any thoughts about the, or Mara, sorry, your finger, hands up?
Well, I would, I just want to add, I don't have necessarily an issue with the philosophy, but I think we need to put some type of a governor, if you will, in the language. So if it does exceed a certain amount, it does have to go back to town meeting. I don't know. I, I get a little concerned when fees can just be increased, right, without proper.
We can't go above $300 for this type of a fee.
But I think what Karen's proposing is that there's language, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what you're proposing is to place language in there that gives the Board of Selectmen or the water commissioners, if you will, a little bit more flexibility to raise them without having to go back to town meeting. Am I right, Karen? Is that what you're saying?
No, or, or, I don't know. I guess I'm just trying to keep it as flexible as possible, just in, you know, what if, what if, yeah, what if we determine that's like, no one's still paying attention or whatever? But you're saying there's a, is there a statutory limit on what we can do, Becky? Is that what you're saying?
There is. I don't know what the statute is, and I might be getting a message here. Yeah, it's a, it's a state.
All right.
Okay, good.
Okay. Great. Let's see. The other thing that, and this is also just probably more semantic. To me, in the bylaws, they're, they're the rules, right? And in two, at least two places, you recommend that those on wells adhere to them. Obviously, it's, it's not enforceable. It's, it's put in there as a encouragement. I get, I get the purpose. I just wonder what the board thinks about the appropriateness of putting a advisory in a bylaw? And that, that's more of a bigger question, not specific about this. Did anyone have that same reaction or thought? I am definitely a wonk, so these are the things I think about. No?
I think, I think that makes sense, Karen. I don't know what specific spot you're talking about, but.
Makes sense to keep it in there, or?
No, no, that, that it should be, these are the rules. These aren't the.
Nice to have.
These aren't the policies. These are the, this is what you have to follow. Because there can still be a whole nother policy document. There can still be a whole nother document outside of the, of the bylaws.
Right, which is what I think Becky was saying, that there are. They're all over the place right now.
Yeah, well, by putting a lot of them in here, you're not going to need them in, you know, the document.
And it's, I think we only make one recommendation where, and I could be wrong, Karen, where we recommend that private well owners follow the rules. This was gone over with a fine tooth comb by town council, and not that that is the end all be all, but from a legal perspective, she was comfortable with it.
Yeah, well, I mean, it doesn't mean anything. That's, that's sort of my point. There's no reason it was fine in there, because it doesn't, I mean, it's, it's an advisory. And this could be me being just kind of wonky that if it's an advisory, it doesn't belong in our bylaws. Yeah, it can be. It's nothing legally wrong with it, but. Mr. Goodrich?
I mean, the, our bylaws, I mean, we have things about the town seal and how things are appropriate. I mean, there's a lot of interesting kind of bylaw type things. I think this is trying to, and actually, I appreciate what Tony was saying, how having a separate kind of a policy type. I, I think part of the, the feeling was by having the town vote on what these policies would be, that it's saying, okay, this is what's recommended for water conservation, and it's, you know, it's, it's bigger than just, it's kind of making that statement, and it being in the bylaws, it's saying, okay, here's the best way for us to proceed forward, though there's no teeth behind it, in the same way that we have how the flag is supposed to be presented and other things that are, you know, you're, no one's going to go to flag jail if you present a situated flag incorrectly.
Don't be so sure.
I don't know. We might want to pick that up next week. Okay, well, I would, you know, I, I, I know that there, I know that you guys spent a lot of time talking about that particular concern. And I think that there's been, you know, I've gotten input that, you know, the whole conversation about well, I'm not sure I'm, I'm personally that comfortable with that recommendation, because, I mean, from what I understand, it, there's really not a lot of evidence that the well, withdrawing water from the well really impacts our water supply. And I mean, I know we could talk about that for 100 years, but it gives me pause as a recommendation, only because I don't, I mean, I suppose it's just an advisory. It's, it is, you said, Andrew, it doesn't really have teeth, but.
And I will say, it's also something that comes down from the state, that private well owners follow the outdoor water use restrictions in general. It's wording that's on their, the state website as well.
EEP or?
EEI.
Yeah, oh, okay.
So it's, you know, it wouldn't be that this is the only place. It's, it's written that, that, that there is a connection. And we're not even, yeah, and so that we're kind of simplifying that connection in this recommendation. So I'd say that, you know, between the state and the North and South Rivers Watershed Association, support that as being an effective recommendation, so.
Okay. Yeah, I'm being, I'm nitpicking, because I, and I apologize, because I know.
Don't apologize.
I'm into it. I, that was all, really, I had a mic moments. If the board doesn't, Mr. Burdrow.
I just want to point out one thing. When you're talking about the fines, you want to leave the fines on the water bill, because that way they're 100% collectible. Otherwise, if you don't pay your water bill, it goes as a lien, so we always collect those. If you make it so someone else is collecting it, then eventually we have to go to court to try to make people pay. So you want to leave those fines as a part of the water bill, so they eventually get collected.
So would you say that there is 100% collection? It wasn't my, that wasn't my impression? Through that pessimism, I should say.
I mean, we don't get 100% collection when we set a fine. People don't always pay it, but eventually we get paid.
Okay, so it could be 20, 30 years down the line.
Someone sells the house, we get paid. We eventually get paid, so we'll go as a lien against the house.
Okay. That's good feedback. Thank you.
Ms. Karen? Does the water, does the water committee need to have this voted on by us this evening? Or can we have a moment to, well, not a moment, or another week or two to read through it a little bit greater detail?
In the rain, what?
Or are we, are we on a time constraint here? I'd like to digest it a little bit more.
The only thing we're voting tonight is that the article could be put on the annual town meeting. And then when you vote, the rest of the town meeting warrant articles, you would vote this at that time.
Okay, fine.
Okay, so we have time to edit if, if needed.
Yes.
Okay.
There's a placeholder, I believe, now, right, Jim?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so how would that work for you to share? Would you have me come back in a couple of weeks, or?
I would think that, yeah, I mean, we would, we would put it on an agenda item as well. And then it has, if the board has, I think it would be a much more streamlined conversation, that people just digest it. And it's a big, it's a big section to add, so.
I mean, we, on the schedule, voting all projects and articles is scheduled for March 9. But I would think that if you wanted changes to this, you would probably want to do it sooner, like maybe by February 23. So they have time to make the changes.
Yeah. Let us look at the schedule, and we'll certainly let, let you know. We need to haul you back in here. If the board doesn't have any more questions, though, I know there are some folks on the call that might want to, there's Freya's hands up. If the board doesn't have any objection, I'll open it up to the general public. Ms. Schlegel? I have, Freya, name and address, please.
Freya Schlegel, 9 West Gate Lane. And I just wanted to comment on the fines. I did a lot of research on the fines from all the towns that I could get any information on. And there is a Massachusetts bylaw that limits it to $300 per fine. And there was definitely precedent in other towns for 300 being their max fine for water use violations.
Thank you, Freya, our newest member.
We're already.
I love it. Any other questions, comments from the public? You can raise your hand or unvideo, or put your video on. Okay, I don't see any questions or comments. All right, so, okay, then why don't we table this for now? And, you know, I'll get some input from you guys, and we'll figure out how soon you, if, you know, if we want to put it back on, or if you're going to be comfortable just voting in March. I suspect there'll be an interim conversation.
Okay, great, yeah.
We'll let you guys know when, when that'll be placed on the agenda.
And that will happen in time, I imagine, Lorraine, for us to, me to then go back to the commission and get things approved as needed before March 9.
Yeah, we'll work through that schedule, and we'll have to make sure that the final is available for the other boards to review before mid-town meeting.
Okay.
So we'll work backwards from the schedule and figure it out.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So, so do you want to approve, do you want to grant the Water Resources Commission, Commission permission to draft the article for the annual town meeting? That's the vote for.
Sorry, Karen?
I have a motion, if you want me to read it.
If you would like to do so, please.
Sure. Move to grant the Water Resources Commission permission to draft an article for the annual town meeting.
It's moved by Ms. Connelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani. Any further discussion?
Yeah, a quick question, just technically, is this, is this bylaw change coming from the board? Or is this coming from, how does this actually, like, is the Water Resource Committee advising us on how we should proceed in our article?
Yes.
So we have the final say on the wording and the content?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, they're advisory to us. They are advisory to us, so they recommended this to us. So the final, we'll have to approve, and we would put it forth.
Okay, so it is ours, and, and we would take what, so at some point, Becky, you're going to gather other feedback that you get from other boards. would take what, so at some point, Becky, you're going to gather other feedback that you get from other boards and bring it before us, and then we'll have the final edification of the document.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I've heard back from the water department and I've worked with town council, DPW, and then a couple handful of members of the planning board I sent you to as well, they haven't responded with comments. So I don't know that they do have any, but yeah, if I do have anything else to add to it, I guess we can, when we reconvene or when we talk again, or I'll make sure I submit it to Lorraine so she can get it to all of you, if there are any substantive changes. But my guess that I haven't heard back from them the last couple of weeks means that there isn't, but.
Thanks.
Okay, sure, and thank you for that clarification about, yeah, yeah, the logistics of it.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion and a second, this would be a real call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes unanimously, and we will circle back with scheduling and next steps.
Great, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Becky, thank you. Thank you. Okay. So our nine o'clock, like, it was to have the widow's walk contract, that has been removed from our agenda. So we do have our last old new, I don't know, scheduled items is the Cituit Harbor Community Building. I'd like to propose just a quick five minute break, we've been sitting here since 6:30. If you guys wouldn't mind just five minutes, and then we'll jump into that, and our rest of our agenda should be pretty efficient, hopefully. So it is 9:02 now, see you at 9:07.
Good, we are recording and we're still live, just so everyone is aware.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Jim, in the update this morning, didn't the school say they're going to stay remote for the rest of the week?
They did not say that this morning, that was announced later on this afternoon. Reopen on Thursday. But now they will stay remote for those two days, Thursday and Friday, and hopefully be back Monday.
Okay. Yeah. I knew, I heard it somewhere. All right, well, we may have to start without Tony, and we can talk about him because he's not here. Did you hear from Amara, did he respond?
I did not.
Okay, well, the reason that, we'll get started, he can catch up, he's a quick study. Back last summer, when the board met, we had a retreat to identify what were our priorities for the coming year. And firmly on that list was to tackle what we are going to do with an unused asset, namely the Harbor Community Center, formerly known as Pier 44. And in your packets is the options and feasibility study that was conducted back in March of 2012, which I believe only Tony may have been on the board at the time, were you, Amara? I'm not sure if you were on the board.
No.
And so we dusted it off, it's in your packet. I, you know, in discussing, you know, this, trying to put this back on the front burner, in looking at that document, it was very thorough. It was a ton of community outreach, there were a lot of options put on the table. And I know Jim's kind of had a chance to look at it quickly. So I wondered if you wanted to just give sort of the 30,000 foot view of where that was, and then we can talk about if that can be a launching pad for the next steps.
So sure, as you said, this is one of the goals of the board, to finally move on the community center, find another use for that property, or some use for that property, and move along with it. The study is dated March 2012. Pier 44 Building Operations and Feasibility Study Committee. It's available, if you go on our website and just go to the search, search Pier 44, it pops right up. Before any discussion of the property comes up, the town needs to be aware that the property was purchased with MBTA mitigation funds. These are received from the MBTA as mitigation on the Green Bush Line for Cituit. The thrust of that restriction is whatever is done at the site is restricted to a quote "public purpose of open space and land preservation for outdoor recreation by and education of the general public", close quote. A more detailed description of this is found on page seven of eight of the report, by reading the notice of use restrictions on page 85 and 86 of the report. Also in the use restriction, any change in quote "use, ownership, possession or control of the premises" is subject to Article 97 of the Amendments to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, unquote. Taken together, that means it would be extremely difficult for the town to divest themselves of that property. Article 97 would require a town meeting vote. It would require agreement of the Attorney General's Office. It would require agreement of Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. And it would require a special act and vote of the legislature. One of the requirements of taking land out of Article 97 is that you must have a like parcel of land that you can protect in lieu of the property that you're taking out. I don't think one of those exists in Cituit that we would be able to protect in lieu of this property. So to take this property out of 97 and to take it out of town possession and try to do something else with it would be problematic at best, close to near impossible. So then the question is, what do we do with the property in light of the restrictions that are on the property from the agreement with the MBTA? The nine-member committee looked at the condition of the existing building, the applicable town, state and federal regulations to get an idea of what could and could be done with the property and what those options might cost. They also solicited input from the public to a survey, which received over 1,000 responses. The survey in part was the following, park space 18%, maritime water use is 15%, youth programs 15%, senior programs 15%, outdoor recreational space 10%, and community meeting space 10%. When we look at that list, I think we can take the senior use off that list because we have now constructed a new senior center, so I think that can come off, and we don't need to consider that anymore. More details on the survey are on page 23 through 26 of the report. So based on that, they basically had three potential reuses for the site. The first one was a park. Either a portion of the site be used for a park with the existing building remaining, or the building be taken down, all are in part, and a park be placed on most of the site. These parks can be passive with some walking paths and some chairs, some seats. Or they could be more, I use the word aggressive, where you would program different things in there, swings, whatever. I know some people have talked about a splash park, whether you'd want to put toilet facilities there. That would either be a building, or I did go around today, you can actually get a prefab bathroom that is self-cleaning that could be put on the site. Obviously, the more intense the use, the more expensive it's going to be, and the more long-range costs and ongoing maintenance costs would be for that site. The second uses were maritime uses. It is right on the coast. The issue with the maritime uses is the access to the water is very restricted, and the amount of water is very restricted as the mariners on either side have permitted use of the space in front of Pier 44. So for us to access the water and get anything on the water would be problematic, but that is a potential use of the property. And the final one was a community center, either with the existing building or a new building. We did have this building looked at as part of the townwide facility study. The building itself is for the most part in good shape, according to the report. The problem is, it does flood when we get bad storms, which means we would be constantly replacing the carpet, painting, things like that. If you were going to replace the building, you would have to meet the new applicable flood codes, which means the building would have to be elevated, which substantially increases the cost of a building such as that. But those are two of the potential uses of a community center. I guess one of my responses to that would be the Gates Campus is supposed to be now our campus center. We have done a significant amount of work for recreation in there. The senior center is there, that might be a better place for a campus if we wanted to do that, or some type of community center. A lot of those community center things are now being done by recreation at the A Wing. And depending upon what you wanted to do, sometimes the schools are better options for community-type centers because of the amenities that they have. So I think that would be a very expensive option for the board to pursue, but it is still an option that's on the table. So the question is, how do we want to proceed from here? We have a study, I think the study was very complete, I think they did an excellent job. They gave the town options based upon what the town had asked for. So does the board want to use the existing study and options? We can then go back out and do some sort of survey monkey for the town residents to find out whether they still want these options, which option they prefer. Have another community meeting as was done before, again, and use what's already been done. Or would you want to go out and do the entire process all over again? Appoint a new committee, go through the whole process from start and see what we come up with as to how we want to use that. I think the committee did give you a good basis for use. I would probably recommend taking those three options. Put a survey together, put it on the town website, and see what people come back as to what they actually want to put there. And then we can start nailing down what those different options would cost. But if something comes in that the town overwhelmingly wants, I think we could focus on that and not use time on looking at some of the other options. So that's what's before you. I hope you've had a chance to read the study again, if anybody wants to look at it. Go to the town website and just search, just search Pier 44, and it comes right up as one of the documents that you can look at.
Thank you, Jim, yeah, the only thing I would add to that is, you know, it was great, great work done in 2012. The only things that have changed, new information for me are, we now have the existence, the senior center is up and running. That, I think, materially changes the conversation. And the other piece of information that's very thorough that we've just received is the harbor, the harbor business sustainability, I forget the whole long title, but the work that Kyle did on the harbor resiliency plan really illustrates the challenges of that particular site, which is information we did not have in 2012. I don't think it changes the recommendations that much, but it will definitely make the use, we'll have to have that factor into whatever we use there. What is the inclination of the board on this? I mean, I'd like this just to be the general conversation to get the ball rolling. We're obviously not going to decide anything substantial tonight. Amara?
I'll start, I don't mind, because I have a lot of thoughts about this. I think also what's changed is we have a lot more meeting space now because the library has also come online, as well as the senior center, public safety building, et cetera. So I think we can take meeting space issues off the table as well from 2012. Jim, I have a couple of questions for you. Would a visitor's center constitute a park as long as a component of it is still open space? So I would want to get some sort of clarification on that. But at a minimum, what I would love to see, there is something like a park, as well as public restrooms and additional parking. But then I have another question, is that at that small amount of access that we have to the water, could that support small craft launching, like kayaks? You know, Waterways is looking for some additional safe areas for folks to launch kayaks and paddle boards, et cetera. So I would want to explore that as well. But as far as going into a completely reanalysis, I think it's a waste of money. The town seemed to constantly spend tons of money on studies and just keep redoing them. I think we have a lot of great information and maybe a simple updated survey monkey out to the residents as to options would be a great way to get some updated feedback. And I'll stop talking.
Couple of things, whether or not a visiting center would meet the requirements of the use agreement. Is that a public use? I don't know. Would it be allowed as an ancillary use to a park? Probably, if it was small, but I think we'd have to get an opinion on that. In terms of a kayak boat launch, I'm doing this off the top of my head. It is a very steep embankment that goes from the parking lot down to the water, and I think right at the bottom of that embankment is actually, there's no water at low tide, I think the tide goes up beyond that. So I'm not sure how you would be able to get down that slope and get to water in a low tide event. It is something we could look at, but it would be a very steep gradient for people to get down with a kayak or a paddleboard.
Yeah, certainly don't want anything unsafe, I just wasn't sure if there might be a path somewhere around to make it possible.
We could look at it, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone else like to chime in? Mr. Goodrich? You look like you're ready to raise your hand.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know who the chair was back there, who did this study, Mr. Vignani, but it's perfect. There's one photo of a park, and that's Nelson Park in Plymouth, which happens to be the splash pad park down in Plymouth, which is wonderful. But no, I totally agree with what, Amara, with what you're saying. We don't need to spend, we're restricted, we know it can't be XYZ uses, we know we can only do a few things. It's going to, I feel strongly that it's going to be some sort of a park, because that's, it's going to be consistent. I can't imagine people are going to be that different. But I think we have to move the ball forward. And I may have given this a cursory look a few months ago, but the more you go through this and see the responses, you can, you can almost devise a few things. Like the park, and again, I'm going to keep harping on with the splash pad, but but no, but folks with disabilities and other issues that we can really start thinking, you know, that folks can really have better access and use that they may not have at other places. You know, I kind of feel strongly that we can kind of provide that in that space that we don't always in other places. And I love the kayak lot, launch idea, but if it's not, if it's too difficult, there's, I think there's, there's places for kind of a menu of those smaller options.
You can launch, you can also launch kayaks right next to that at the boat ramp. Next week, and launch your kayaks, your boats. The one thing, the one major advantage of this, it is a beautiful piece of waterfront property that the town owns that already has parking.
Right, yeah.
A lot of other places, so depending upon what we did, it would make a magnificent park, really.
And I think, I think those of us who've been on the board for a long time have always heard about complaints about lack of parking down in the harbor for our visitors, so that's another great opportunity for us to get some additional spaces.
Ms. Conley, were you next?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I think, to your point, Karen, that the harbor resiliency, this could be a key element in that plan. And one of the things that they recommend as being a way to deal with coastal flooding, et cetera, is to build more green spaces along, you know, where there's water. So, and the only caution I would make is, is that I think we need to explain to the community very succinctly, the way Jim did, about the road to doing anything else with that piece of property. Because there are still people in town who think we should sell it and let someone build on it. There are still people who think that we should put a restaurant back there. So if we do a survey monkey or anything, I would like to be sure that we include whatever language that explains to people, these are realistic options, the other options are not viable for the following reasons. So, and I agree with everyone that now that we've got the senior center, that's off the table. We have plenty of meeting space in town, so that's off the table. And it is a beautiful piece of property, so I'd like to see us improve it. So that's all I have to say. And no more studies.
No more studies. Mr. Vignani, did you like to opine on this subject?
Yeah, I don't have a, like, an agenda or clear vision of the site yet. I do, I do say, you know, that voice in the back of my head, I don't like the idea of tearing down a building that is good. And I think there is definitely groups in town and functions in town that need space for other things. I like the idea of the tourist center going somewhere in town and being a component of it. You know, I think the main point would be to make it more active than it is now. So I don't know what the solution is, but moving in some sort of a direction that's going to make it a little bit more vibrant and active than it is now. So I'm glad we're starting the discussions on it, I just, I just don't know what the answer is yet.
Well, I think I'm hearing, unless, Tony, you feel differently, I think I'm hearing is, nobody wants to reinvent the wheel, that the work done in 2012 was really good groundwork. That we now have more, we have just current information that needs to be filtered, that information, like we have a senior center, we have a library, all of that. So maybe the, I think Jim's proposal. So maybe the, I think Jim's proposal, the next step is to, to look at those two pieces of information and craft some, I personally think it's too dusty. We need to go back to the public with proposals. Too much time has passed to make sure that we have a consensus in the community and then, and then start working on some plans. So what do you guys think about sort of next step is, is sort of rolling out a questionnaire or something like that? Everyone, I got nodding.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, a lot of nodding, okay.
The only thing I'd add to that is, and we talked about doing this for a few other things, is just go to our fellow boards and have them give, you know, give other small group input in terms of what, what they think it is. I mean, we can have a lot of people give their individual thoughts, but, you know, to have the zoning committee and the planning committee and EDC come back and kind of beat it up a little bit.
That's a great idea. Little mini focus groups of our people that are already engaged, yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was done as part of this study. The reason I left it out is because the major response from town departments previously was, we need more space, and it couldn't be used for that. So I didn't mention that, but that was part of the original. So we can do that also. Just, again, send almost the same survey out to boards, committees, commissions. You know, in a perfect world, what would you like to see done with the harbor community building?
Right, but I don't, I think we don't leave it open-ended. We springboard off of the work already. Yeah. Good. I think that's a good next step.
I don't know if any one of the board wants to, wants to assist or review the questions before they go out or the Survey Monkey. I think it's probably something up Andrew's alley in terms of marketing. So I could work with Andrew to get that, we can announce it.
All in favor of Andrew taking that lead?
We can get it banged out, we can announce it next week when it's going to go up and get it up.
That'd be great.
Week, 10 days.
I have a question.
Yes, Karen.
Who owns the parking lot that is attached to the boat ramp?
The town.
State, I thought.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
It's a state, public, oh, wait, sorry.
So I'm sorry, I didn't get the answer.
The state, Mara's right, it's the Commonwealth that owns it.
Okay. Because I was just thinking, if we owned it, then we could totally make the entire Pier 44 area, but...
Well, there isn't a intervening piece of property that we don't own.
Right, right, right. Is that where that propane tank is?
Gasoline, actually, yeah.
Whatever it is.
Gas and diesel.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot of potential, unbelievable potential on that site. So those are the things we'll have to work out. Yes, Mara?
Yeah, and I'd just like to add, you know, I think Stephen Moon brought up at one of the Waterways commissions that the state also is looking at updating that Jericho area as well. It's a couple of years down the road, but it would be nice if it coincided. That would be beautiful, but they're looking at that, Karen, too.
It's not a real quiet, restful site. It is a very busy site, especially on weekends.
Right.
Trucks and trailers and boats and...
You're right.
It gets a lot, a lot of use in the, in the good weather.
Boat cranes, yeah.
If the board, I just wanted to give, if anybody is, there's a couple of folks on participants, if anyone would like to put their two cents in on the next steps on the Pier 44 review and open it up to the public, then raise your hand, you can put your video on. Okay. Does the board, Andrew, you always look like you're ready to say something. Okay. Good, I think we have good next step. I, really important to me that, you know, May is going to be here before long, and I didn't want this to, to be something we didn't get moving, so thank you. All right. That concludes our scheduled agenda items. We're going to move on to new business. And because I'm fading, I am one of the quarantine, just so everyone who doesn't know knows. And I've asked Mr. Vignani, is our vice chair, if he wouldn't mind just taking over the chairmanship so that I can not try to put together another sentence.
I'd be happy to. Okay, so moving on to new business. We have a discussion and a vote for board and committee appointments. And we're starting with the Public Building Commission, Homarock Fire Station use members. Get to that page. Chief, so you're good.
Did you just want to motion?
I don't know, is there any discussion on it?
This is a normal course of action that the board takes. From what I understand, when there's a certain project that involves a department, those department members are appointed to the PVC just to be part of that project.
Okay.
So this is for the building of the Homarock Fire Station?
Correct.
And this would be kind of our designated hands-on deck to go through the project with the OPM.
Correct.
Right. Chief, do you have anything to add?
Nope, just the three members there. So Captain McGowan, who might be our point person from the floor, myself and Deputy Elliott. So the three members would be great.
Okay. Any comments, any questions from the board? Then I'll take a motion.
Move to appoint Chief John Murphy, Deputy Chief Al Elliott, and Captain Brian McGowan to the Public Building Commission, Homarock Fire Station user member for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within 30 days.
I have a motion, I have a second. Second by Mr. Goodrich. Further discussion? Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Great, so the other appointment that we're talking in with tonight is the Sister Cities Sousy En Brie renewals. So we've got some names before us.
Yeah, they're all renewals, and these guys just continue to knock it out of the park.
Yeah.
They do a great job. Motion?
Yes. Are there, just to go over the numbers of it, are all these are just renewal appointments? And there's no, no eliminations of any positions, right?
No, we already appointed the new members a couple of months ago. We just never did the reappointment, so I just wanted to clean this up.
Awesome, can I have a motion, Mara?
Sure. Move to reappoint Patricia Jakar, Emily Boobin Green, Nicole Joyous Kramer, Gamary Jean, Anita Ahern, Marie Flaherty, Susan T. Lincoln, and Peter S. Lincoln to the Sister City France Sousy En Brie Committee for a term of three years or until successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within 30 days.
Right, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Further discussion? Seeing none, and I'll just repeat what Chairman Canfield said. These guys do a great job. You know, they are so much energy and so many great ideas. It's, we're lucky to have them on the board.
Roll call vote?
Please.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so now, moving on up, we have some drain layer license renewals for 2021. If I don't have any discussions, anyone have anything to talk about, I'll take a motion for those.
Move to approve a renewal of a drain layers license to the following businesses: Dandel Construction, Inc., Gallagher Corp., Iaria Brothers, Inc., Jones Contracting, Inc., McDuble Brothers, McHeckern Contracting, Richmond Sand and Gravel, Inc., Wrangler Excavation Corp.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Actually, we'll do a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Who was the second on that? I'm sorry, who was the second on that?
Ms. Curran.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next topic here is the seasonal population estimate form. So every year we go through and we estimate what our, our population is going to be in the summer. And Jim, is this the same as it was last year?
Yes.
It was, okay. Great, so this is just a, pretty much a standard procedure to give to the ABCC. Any questions on it or comments? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
Move to approve the 2021 seasonal population estimate. As of July 10th, 2021, our resident population estimate is 28,500.
Second? By Chairman Canfield? Further discussion? Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote for that?
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Great. Boy, this move, this meeting's cruising now. So we have, we have other business that, does anyone have any liaison reports to?
Only got an hour.
Anyone want to summarize, Ms. Curran?
I do, I just wanted to let everybody know, we had our first DEI meeting last, I want to say, Tuesday. And we have some new leaders. Nikki Sanders-Smee is the chair, Tom Secures is the vice chair, and Ruth Isene is the secretary. So they'll be commencing and posting agendas to convene Tuesday nights opposite Board of Selectmen meetings. And great group, as you all know. So everybody's really looking forward to digging in and making some progress. So it was a great meeting.
Good. Great job, Mara. Get that ball rolling. Anybody else?
Just real quick.
Ms. Canfield?
The, I just want to let everybody know that the Master Plan Advisory Committee is now finishing their final comments on the draft of the master plan. So that will, the next phase for that, once that's done, will be to release it for public comment. So that cycle will begin soon. But we're getting near the finish line.
Awesome. Any others?
I will just add two. I met with Veterans Advisory Committee last week, and they are doing a great job moving forward. They did have one request that I'm going to type up and send over to the board. And the American Legion is looking for a place to kind of utilize on a regular basis and store some of their stuff. And they were hoping that maybe the WPA building may be available to them. They said they would help maintain the building. Don't need to use it solely, but they would want to have it available to them, you know, probably at least one time a week. So I spoke to Jim about it, about available space for the storage. And I'll get a little document out to everybody. We can talk about it in the next meeting, see if anyone has a problem with that. The other thing is, I just wanted to note that Andrew and I met with Cituit Wind earlier this week and passed along the requests and our questions from the previous meeting. They'll be doing their data gathering and getting back to us beginning of next week. So we'll be able to have something prior to our next meeting to discuss on that topic. Anything else, Andrew, that I missed on that?
No, I think we should wait to see those numbers.
Yeah. And they're also, not only is it financial, but they're also going to give us a list of, of other things that they've seen other communities use to help, you know, mitigate the problems that we're dealing with. So looking forward to getting that. And that's all I have. If there's no others, then we'll move on to correspondence.
We have two pieces of correspondence, one from the Sousy En Brie Committee in France. And they're just telling us that it's been an unfortunate year for all of us, but they're looking forward to our continued relationship with them. And it was a very, very nice letter, so that was a good thing. And on the other hand, we received an extremely technical letter from FEMA about the proposed modified flood hazard determinations affecting the flood insurance rate map. It goes on for eight pages, so I don't think I'm in a position to summarize it. But Jim, do you have any comments about what kind of, you know, I mean, it's an, I got it today. It's an eight-page, it's all in legalese.
Well, they basically assume that they've accepted the, we've accepted the flood plane, right? Or the flood maps.
We need to make a couple of technical changes to our current policy, which we're working on by June 30th in order to be compliant. So we're working with the state to make sure that the changes we're going to suggest are correct. But about 90% of what the federal government is asking us is already in our policies. So we just got to do a couple, a little bit of tweaking to make sure we're complete compliance.
I just didn't want to say anything that would light anyone's hair on fire. I know what this topic is, so I'm like, I'm not summarizing it.
Just note that we have the letter.
We have the letter.
It's available to anyone that wants to read it.
Kyle's on it, he understands it, and he's, he'll make sure it's all okay.
Yeah. That's it for me.
Okay, any other correspondence?
That's it.
Okay. Andrew?
I will say, I had a great meeting with Cub Scout Troop 7, tore through the town forest. There were some old signs that the Boy Scouts had done that are already in the town forest. And they were interested in either repainting them and fixing some of the broken ones that are there, but that they wanted, we wanted to make sure that it was okay and ask permission before proceeding. I didn't see, it was a nice little sign that they just wanted to redo. So thank them for that, and hopefully we can get the proper permits for them to proceed.
Yes. Karen?
If I could suggest that perhaps they could take their proposal to the Conservation Commission, so you can show them government at work, what you have to do in order to do what they'd like to do. Because I think that's conservation land, yes? The town forest?
Not necessarily.
I think it is.
Forest is not conservation.
Not necessarily conservation. I'll have to look whether it's on the commission or whether it's on the Board of Selectmen. Town forest by itself, its designation is not necessarily conservation. It is protected, but it's not necessarily conservation. So I'd have to look and see what's on there, but...
All right, well, whoever they'd have to go to.
It's still town land.
Yeah.
Mara?
Which town forest, Andrew? The one off 3A or the one off Maple?
Yeah, the one across from the Public Safety.
Okay.
3A, yeah.
What on Maple Street could use some, some love and care, too?
They're not going to paint your house.
I don't live on Maple Street.
Before Karen passes out, I usually stay off social media, but I saw something really cool today that there was a survivor of the Titanic who lived in Situit and is buried at the St. Mary Cemetery.
I saw that.
I thought that was so cool when I saw it.
I think it said she was the oldest survivor of the Titanic sinking.
I don't know about that, because it actually was a baby that survived and lived, I think, almost into her 90s. But I just thought it was cool. She lived on Second Cliff for years and years and years and...
Do we have a name that we could recognize her?
There is a name.
I hear the, I can feel the historic society.
It's an odd name.
Mary Futrellle, F-U-T-R-E-L-L-E. She passed away in 1967.
That's Irish name.
And there's a, there's a little headstone that says Titanic survivor on it at the cemetery. I just thought that was so cool.
Oh, that's nice. All right. We'll put that on the heritage trail.
I probably get something useful on social media after all these years.
Cool.
Good job. All right, the next item up for discussion is acceptance of minutes. We have the minutes from January 5th, and then we have the executive minutes from January 5th also. Can I have a motion to accept first the regular minutes?
So moved.
Motion to accept the minutes for second meetings on January 5th, 2021. Great, and the second motion is motion to accept and not release executive session minutes for the Board of Selectmen's meeting on January 5th, 2021, since matters are still being discussed and pending at this time.
So moved.
Second by?
Second.
Ms. Conley? All in favor, we'll do a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes. Great. Hold on as I scan back up. I think we're going to executive session, is that right?
Yeah, do we have documents that need signed at all?
Yes, we do. Yeah.
It'll be a very brief executive session.
Yeah. All right, so if you guys... All right, so if you guys, if whoever's not in quarantine and around, if you could go sign tomorrow, that'd be ducky. I will not be one of them.
Andrew, have you been released?
I'm released. Antested, a negative.
Excellent.
Would you like to make the motion, Madam Chair, or do you want me to?
You got it in front of you, I do too, it doesn't matter.
Well, it says, it says the chair, so why don't you?
All right, the chair declares that the Board of Selectmen move into executive session pursuant to purpose three of the Open Meeting Law to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. And I declare an open meeting may be detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the Board of Selectmen in connection with this matter. The board will not reconvene in open session. I am seeking a motion to move into executive session. Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Selectmen go into executive session at 9:49, wait, yeah, 9:49 PM. Is that, do we need to read the whole thing?
Yeah.
Nine, wait, one minute, sorry, guys. I'm reading the wrong one. Okay, move that the Board of Selectmen go into executive session pursuant to purpose three of the Open Meeting Law to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. And I declare that an open meeting law may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the Board of Selectmen in connection with this matter. And the board will not reconvene in open session.
Curran, is there a second?
I should just reiterate that the matter is the shellfish commercial agriculture.
Yeah, I should say that, yeah. Matter being discussed is the shellfish commercial agriculture as amended, is that correct, Ms. Curran?
Correct.
And seconded by Ms. Conley. We will not reconvene, any further discussion. If not, we'll do roll call vote and move into executive.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Great, that concludes our evening. Thank you, Mr. Vignani, for pitch hitting, and we will see you all in two weeks.